Forward and lead us in that, followed by the invocation by myself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you again for this day. Thank you for every day that you bless us with. Thank you for allowing our citizens and ourselves to come forward and do your business. Thank you for allowing our citizens to speak in reference to any topic freely. And, Lord, please be with our public safety today as the weather is not the best. And, Lord, let us, this board, do your business and show glory to your name. Amen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. First item of business is your approval of the agenda for this meeting. There are no additions proposed in the bullpen. There is a request, though, to relocate the discussion under presentation number two, the discussion of the legal services contract. If that could be moved down to be taken up in public after the closed session, would appreciate that change to the agenda.
Motion to approve as asked by the county administrator with the movement of...
Thank you. So, the movement of number two from the presentations down after closed?
To after closed session.
All right. Motion by Mr. Skinner. Need discussion? Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair.
Next, we have an award presentation for the heart-safe communities. This is by the Rappahannock EMS Council.
Hello, my name is Kevin Dillard, and I'm the president of the Rappahannock EMS Council. With me is one of our board members, Lori Knowles, and she's the chair of our Heart and Safety Committee, our Stroke and Safety Committee. And we're here tonight to recognize Spotsylvania County as a heart-safe community. And what the heart-safe community is, it's a special recognition that's given to a jurisdiction for going above and beyond and ensuring that the community safer place for the citizens and the visitors. And all of this work is kudos to the Spotsylvania County Fire Rescue and Emergency Management. To be considered for this award, they've had to get out in the community and offer a lot of CPR classes and make sure that the general public is trained in CPR, to make sure that they know how to use the automatic external defibrillators, the AEDs. And I want to commend the county because not only have they done all this work, but they've worked in partnership with the other public safety agencies. So, your sheriff's department, their deputies are trained in CPR, most of their patrol cars have AEDs on them. The dispatch center is trained in emergency medical dispatch. And then y'all have AEDs throughout the community, whether it be in churches, the YMCA, the public buildings, the schools. And I want to commend you. I noticed when I walked in the door right here, you got your AED right outside the board chambers. So, you know, great job on all that. So, Spotsylvania County becomes only the sixth jurisdiction in the Commonwealth of Virginia to receive this prestigious recognition. So, you'll be joining the city of Fredericksburg, Stafford County, King George, the greater Williamsburg area, and Paratand County. So, this time, we'd like to present you all with a certificate recognizing you as a heart-safe community. And we also have a couple signs that you can place as people enter Spotsylvania County, letting everybody know that you're now a heart-safe community. So, I'd like to present this to Chief Collingham.
Everyone in front for a quick...
Sheriff, hello.
Next up, Board members, is a recognition of the Belmont Foundation.
Mr. Fortner, you want to come up and bring your group? And you can do, I'm gonna let you do the introductions, if you don't mind? Yes, sir. And please let us know a little bit of something about yourselves and what you're doing.
Sure. My name is Steve Fortner, president of the Belmont Foundation. With me is Dave Rice, our treasurer, Sam Cashman, who's one of our key committee chairman, Tony Smith, I almost forgot Smith. Tony Smith works for Microsoft Corporation. He's one of our key advisors, as well as our, I guess, he's coached us into being a, getting on Microsoft's corporate give program. We'll mention more about that. Don Burridge is our director-at-large. Steve Fritz is our vice president, and Gary Jackson is our secretary. We're a small group around Lake Anna. We've kind of grown. We started in January of this year. Our goal, our mission, is to help the economically depressed throughout central Virginia. It's kind of a broad brush mission. We focus now on Palms, which is Post Oak Middle School. I noticed the principal from Post Oak Middle School is here, Scott, if you'd like to stand up. Working with the school superintendent in Spotsylvania County, he had all these needs and so forth, but we talked it out, and we got together. And he suggested we focus initially at Post Oak Middle School. And we are excited to help in every way we can with that school. Everything from food to clothing to technology enhancement via Microsoft Corporation and everything else. Our budget, we've raised so far over $40,000 this year. And I have to mention that we started in January. It was a dream. And by middle of March, the IRS approved us as a 501(c)(3). I told the guys in the very beginning, don't put the words patriot or anything else in the name, and then maybe we'll get through. So, it was kind of a miracle. We feel very honored to be a part of the community. We're heavily involved in things right now. Sam has taken on one of our largest projects, which has to do with Thanksgiving. We're getting a lot of interest in turkey dinners, and I think we're gonna be distributing about 40 of them. So, we're involved in so many things with Post Oak Middle School, and Scott, the principal, and his team. We're just, we're partnered, and it's exciting. So, we're hoping that we can continue to support the school and perhaps grow and support others in need throughout the rest of our time.
Well, look, I really appreciate what y'all have done. And I have kids that go to Post Oak, so I see firsthand what you're doing out there, and it's fantastic, because it has been one of the missed things that's out there. Now, from the mulch that you put down, from all these lunches, food for the underserved, I'll just put it like that. But y'all have really been a standout. And for it to come and come to where you are in just a very short period of time is incredible. My hat's off to you. And what you've done for the Livingston District and Spotsylvania County as a whole is very commendable. And I hope you do continue to grow and can help some others out there well beyond Palms. But I just thank you so much. I don't know how many of you have kids or grandkids in the school system of Spotsy, but I just thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
It's not gone unnoticed, and that's why I wanted to bring y'all up and make sure the rest of the board members know what you're doing out there and the amount of work that you're putting in in time and effort. It's, you know, this doesn't do you justice, really.
Well, and also, like, things like getting connected with the Fredericksburg Food Bank. We're now one of the direct partners with them. They're treating us so wonderfully. It's amazing. So, it's, you can do a lot when you have people that come together with one mission, and that's what we are. We just want to serve, and we're getting a lot of community involvement, and it's fantastic to see everybody step up.
Well, I congratulate you, and hats off. Y'all want to come up and do a photo op again?
Next item is your consent agenda. Board members, may I have the floor computer, please? The consent agenda for November 15, 2018 is as follows. First is the approval of a board meeting minutes for October 9 and October 23, 2018. Item two is the approval of a contract to Taft Construction, Inc. This is for the Animal Shelter Expansion Renovation and Utility Administration Parking Lots Project, low bid price of $5,928,986. Item three is the approval of a contract modification for the renewal of Sullivan Donahoe and Ingalls Contract to provide third-party inspections for stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. So, professional engineering services, and this is the fourth and final renewal on that contract. Item four is to authorize a public hearing on the code changes to repeal the solar power exemption from our local taxes in our county code. So, a public hearing at the December 11 board meeting. Item five is to approve a grant award and acceptance and budget adjustment. This is for the federal fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. The grant is $30,237 with a match from the sheriff's office of $583 for a total of $30,820. This will purchase 23 body-worn cameras and installations at three transfer stations. Item six is to approve a grant award and acceptance and a budget adjustment for the federal fiscal year 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program. This grant is $28,834 with a sheriff's match of $841 for a total of $29,675. This will purchase 22 body-worn cameras and three transfer stations. Transfer stations move the data from the cameras to our storage system. Item seven is approval of a grant award acceptance for the federal fiscal year 18 BJA Stop Violence Threat Assessment and Technology Reporting Program. This is a grant of up to $47,296 with the schools providing a 25% local match. Item eight is a resolution requesting that the Commonwealth of Virginia expand Lake Anna State Park. And item nine is a resolution approving the Economic Development Authority's issuance of revenue bonds for financing for the Palmer's Creek development. And that is today's consent agenda.
All right. We're wrapping up public presentations for the consent agenda. This is for the consent agenda only. Is there anybody that would have signed up for the consent agenda?
Sean Fogarty.
Sean Fogarty, Livingston District. The fourth item on your consent agenda would authorize a public hearing to repeal a county ordinance which exempts local real and personal property taxes for solar energy equipment, facilities, and devices. There's been some discussions that this might result in additional tax revenue from any solar plant that might be built in the county. There is, I just wanted to, at least my interpretation is that there still remains a state-mandated 80% exemption on local taxes for solar energy equipment and facilities in the county, which would apply to any solar plant that's built. So, I believe that any solar plant that's built would still be exempted from all but 20% of local taxes and thus pay very little in tax revenue to the county. But I also look forward to hearing more about the interpretation of this provision from county staff. And here, we're at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak at this time on the public agenda or consent agenda? So, none will close that presentation? Any discussion from the board?
Like to pull number nine, please.
All right. Mr. Ross wants to pull number nine. Anybody else? Can we give a motion to at least approve all but number nine? We got a motion by Dr. Trampy to approve all but number nine in the consent agenda. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's eye. Mr. Ross, you want for the...
Well, I guess I can start. I've voiced my concerns to staff about this issue. I don't exactly know what this issue is. I haven't had an answer back in two days. So, it seems a bad place to put something on the consent agenda. I haven't been briefed on it, to my knowledge. I've talked to several board members. They weren't briefed on this either. This is an apartment complex project that the majority of the board approved at our last meeting or two meetings ago. Never was it mentioned that there'd be an EDA-sponsored bond for $22 million to build an apartment complex. I'm not comfortable with voting on it. I'd like to hear more about what this exactly is. From staff, I've heard that it doesn't impact the county at all. However, in our own package, it's written, failure to obtain county authorization for the bonds within the 60-day time limit could result in increased finance costs, delays in the project acquisition and construction, or possible failure to proceed with the project. I personally think we should have had this information before we voted on the project. It also says if the bonds are not issued, the applicant will have to pay higher interest rates to finance the project or cancel plans for construction of the project. So, I don't see how, the feedback from staff I've received is it doesn't matter, the project's gonna go anyway, it wasn't part of the project, but this is in our own package and the only information we have to act on. So, if staff could elaborate what this is. And again, it's only $22 million. Maybe we should have had better, better intelligence, better stuff in our package before tonight, before this actual moment.
Do we have a St. Pontaventure representative here? Would you mind if he comes up and gives you some explanation?
Because I... Well, again, I don't mind at all, but why are we getting this tonight? I mean, again, we're getting this information tonight, and I think that's unfair to the constituents we represent to have it tonight, you know, minutes before we're supposed to make a decision on this. So, sure.
Go ahead, sir. If you can explain, please. Do you mind, Ms. Chair? He'll give us information. I think you'll find out why.
Give an explanation.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Graff. I'm with McGuire Woods. I'm bond counsel to the EDA, but we also have a representative from Pontaventure, the developer of Palmer's Creek here, J.P. Highland, to answer any questions. Are there specific questions that you'd like us to try to respond to this evening?
What I'd like you to do is explain, if you would, sir.
Sure.
Because I heard the explanation, I believe it was on, what's today, Monday, Monday, I think it was yesterday. And I think there is fears, and I think Mr. Ross had the right and was appropriate in asking the questions. But if either, J.P., you would explain it as you explained it to us, or you would explain it as J.P. did, meaning that we were just a, the EDA is just a, I'm not sure what word they used, a vehicle to go through the money. There is no, there are no obligations by this county whatsoever on this thing. Plus, it's, I believe it's an opportunity for the EDA to earn a percent of what those bonds are, which might be $120,000, which would go back to the EDA and could be used as incentives. But there is no obligation whatsoever to this county. Just EDAs do this for that purpose.
That's correct, Mr. Skinner. I think the word that maybe we shared with folks earlier is conduit. The Economic Development Authority serves as a conduit and is able to provide economic development incentives to certain types of capital projects, including workforce housing. The EDA is not liable on the financing. The county's not liable on the financing. The EDA serves as a pass-through and allows the applicant to achieve a lower rate of interest on their financing via a tax exemption that's provided as a federal incentive. In addition to sort of spurring economic development growth, the EDA is permitted to charge a fee to serve as a conduit. And depending upon the final size of the financing, the EDA's fee could be over $100,000. There's no effect on the county's credit rating, the county's debt capacity, no obligation of the county or the EDA, frankly, with respect to the financing. They serve as a pass-through. The bonds are only payable from revenues from the project and other collateral that the developer may pledge to the financing.
Mr. Chair.
Right.
So, I got some frustrations as well, because this was not presented during this, when this development was brought forward to the board, there was no discussion about this. It wasn't brought up. It would have been a better time to discuss that at that point, but it wasn't. This was slipped in on the consent agenda, which was inappropriate. So, I guess my problem is, how, let me ask, how many of these have we done already in the county?
This is the first of its kind.
Exactly. This is the first one that's been done in the county, and we're trying to slip it in the consent agenda. It's not the right time, not the right place. I'm motioning that we table this until we've had a proper opportunity to look at the data, understand it in full with the whole board.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dr. Trampy.
I'm not against tabling it, but I wanted to ask a few questions. It's been mentioned that neither the county or the EDA has liability. The way our packet reads in part, it says, "The financial institution that purchases the EDA bonds will undertake its own credit underwriting effort and evaluation of the applicant's business plan." If the EDA issues the bonds, but when each financial institution takes a look at these things and declines, if you can't find a financial institution to purchase the bonds, is the EDA then liable?
No. And the EDA would not issue the bonds absent a commitment from a financial institution to purchase the bonds.
My other questions are more appropriately directed towards staff. Maybe, Tom, you know, was this, I know the EDA has been looking for a revenue source for quite some time, and we've endorsed the need for a revenue source for EDA. So, did this initiative come from EDA, or did it come from the applicants from Palmer's Creek?
The applicant requested the EDA participation. So, it wasn't something that the EDA advertised for people to bring deals in. This was something the applicant requested of the EDA.
And do you recall the vote on this in EDA, if it was unanimous or how?
I believe it was unanimous.
Were all seven members present?
One may have been not present.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
If these bonds were issued, and there was a default on them, say, the Palmer's Creek LLC went bankrupt, who is responsible?
There's no recourse to the EDA or the county. The responsibility lies with the Palmer's Creek entity. That's the borrower on the transaction.
And in general, and I'm not sure if you know this answer, is financing for apartment complexes in Spotsylvania County at this present time very difficult to come by?
I don't know the answer to that. I do know that the EDA, and it's been some time, but the EDA and the board of supervisors have approved conduit revenue bond financings in the past, because I've worked on some of those transactions. The one that leaps to mind is the Civil War Preservation Trust financed the acquisition of the battlefield across from the country club with EDA revenue bonds, and those bonds were approved by the board of supervisors of the county.
When was that?
It was several years ago.
Slaughter Pin Farm, about eight years ago when they did it. And we had other opportunities from, King George actually came up and asked of our EDA, and we were gonna do it, but the King George didn't decide not to go through with their project. So, it's, there is no threat or any obligation by this developer. It's a sound process which gives the EDA some funds, a percent of the total bonds, a smaller percent. And first of all, I don't think anybody's trying to slide this in under this. I've met with Pontaventure. I know these people, and they're not that way. They've been upfront with us all. And, you know, since it doesn't really, you know, involve any, you know, doesn't, any backing from the county, no matter what happens, this is clear and clean. We have no obligation, no matter what happens. And if the bond should fail, or Pontaventure, whatever, or Palmer's Creek doesn't come through that, they cannot come back on us whatsoever. So, first of all, like I said, I don't think anybody's trying to slip anything by you. And when I saw Mr. Ross's concern, I understood exactly why he would have a concern. I had the same. Does it affect our cap? No. Does it affect our ratings? No. And so, that's, I did. I went out and answered, had those questions answered. So, I mean, there's not much more you're gonna know than what you have heard right now, tonight, to be honest with you. Okay? There's just no reason not to accept this tonight, to be honest with you. There's no more information that we're gonna be able to give you next week, next time, or anything. And I truly don't think they tried to sneak this under.
Mr. Ross. Go ahead, Dr. Trampy.
What is the deadline for approving this or not?
There's a 60-day rule in the Industrial Development Authorities Act that governs the EDA that requires the required governing body approval that's required by the IDA Act and also required by the federal law of tax-exempt bonds. But in the IDA Act in Virginia, there's a 60-day window following the public hearing that the EDA held to get that governing body approval, which in this case would be the Spotsylvania Board of Supervisors' approval. If we miss that window, we could come back and do the whole process over, I guess. It would be costly and, you know, time-consuming, but...
When was their hearing?
I think it was October, I think it was...
October 25.
Yeah, I think it was October 25.
Built by Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just one more time. You mentioned costly. To who?
To the applicant.
Okay. But no cost? The county incurs no cost whatsoever?
Neither the county or the EDA incurs any cost associated with this financing. The EDA will receive fees to serve as the conduit.
Mr. Ross.
Mr. Taylor, why does the board even have to approve this if there's no consequence to the county?
It's a great, Mr. Graff, question, because it is a statutory requirement, is my understanding.
Yeah, it's a legal requirement of the IDA statute that governs EDAs, and it's a legal requirement of the Internal Revenue Code that governs tax-exempt bonds.
I gotta, they're using the workforce, what's it called that they're using? Because they've offered up some, I guess, lesser rent for some of our workforce.
Yeah, it's workforce housing. There are certain types of private projects that qualify for this incentive. Workforce housing is one of them. The Civil War Preservation Trust was an example of a 501(c)(3) organization. That's another qualifying type of applicant that can receive this incentive through an EDA. Small manufacturing companies are eligible as well. I believe the county and the EDA have worked with small manufacturing companies in the past, AKA Printing and Mailing. Their facility was financed this way. The board of supervisors approved the EDA's assistance on that financing.
All right. How many of these apartments were supposed to be for workforce?
It's a value. It's $250,000 that they put forward, and that each year, that each month, those that qualify would get a $250 reduction in the rent, I believe.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to table. Mr. Yakubowski? Go ahead. Go ahead.
This type of process is pretty common with larger jurisdictions to, for their EDAs.
It's extremely common. In fact, it's all I do for a living at Maguire Woods. In the workforce housing space, I've got similar transactions pending currently in Arlington, Newport News, Richmond, Stanton. So it's, it's a very routine financing mechanism. It's not something that's been brought before the Spotsy EDA in a few years, but it's, it's really very common.
And out of all of those, how many have defaulted and harmed the locality?
I, I've been doing this for 25 years. I've never seen one of these transactions default. Anecdotally, there are some that have in the United States. I don't know in any instance that the sponsoring entity has ever incurred any liability in that regard. They're structured specifically to avoid that consequence.
Right. And, and I would say that the, the board here has talked about the EDA trying to find their own revenue streams. And I know that this has been brought up at the EDA before in just discussion. I don't know if it was formal or not. And I know it has been talked about. I don't think it has been brought to the board level as such, but in, you know, off-the-dais discussions that we have had, we have been trying to find ways that the EDA can start to be self-sufficient. We don't have to pay their mortgage for their building. So I think that this is, is a positive thing. And, and again, there is no liability that comes back on the county, nor does it affect our debt capacity, or any other factors, or our rating, or anything else. So it, it truly is a way for them to, to find financing. And would be a good way for them to start with this, and then perhaps advertise it more, and see if we can get more involved in, in others using this avenue.
Again, it's been a number of years, but I've represented the EDA on these sorts of matters for a long time. And in the past, we've had seminars where we advertised to the public that this was an economic development incentive that was available. We've had brokers and other folks come in and educated them about the, the program. We'd be happy to do that again.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Skinner?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm going to do a substitute motion.
Okay.
And I'd like to substitute that we go ahead and pass this, and for two reasons. One, if you've tabled it to the next meeting, it's going to be over the 60 days, I believe. You said October the 25th?
We would have, we would have till Christmas to, to meet the, to meet the window, I guess. 60 days after October 25.
Oh, okay. I got you. Well, you know, the thing that I'm going to repeat, and that is, you've heard all the information out front. There's no more information that you're going to be able to get beforehand. I recommend that if this happens again, then we would at least get some type of prior information to the board meeting, okay, so that everybody understands what we're doing. I mean, this is the first one, so we live and learn. But I, I see we gain nothing by tabling this to the next meeting or whatever. We're not going to provide any more information than you've been told today. And it's a good thing for our EDA. We've been looking for the revenue, and it's a great way to do it without any obligation from either EDA or the county. So my motion is to approve.
Mr. Ross?
Well, I'll just repeat what I said. I've asked questions about a $22 million bond let, and I haven't got an answer back until tonight. I wouldn't purchase a $20,000 item on my own without doing research and knowing more about it up until the, the night that I'm going to make that decision, or waiting until then. So I'm not going to treat any kind of decision up here, other than I would personally, and I'm not prepared to vote on it, because Tuesday I asked questions about it. I've not gotten any response back in an email until tonight. And I'm not, I, I just can't vote for something that authorizes $22 million of bonds on a whim. And I know it might not be, but for me, it is, because tonight's the first night that I've gotten an explanation about what it really is.
What more information would you need, Mr. Ross?
I would like time to look at it. I'd like it in writing. I'd like my emails responded to from staff.
Okay, so...
The question's out there.
Sorry.
Staff hasn't responded to it. I haven't seen it, and I'm not prepared to do it tonight. And I don't think it's the applicant that snuck it into the consent agenda. I think it's staff. It doesn't seem appropriate, the very first time we do an EDA bond in over eight years, to put it in the consent agenda. And if there were supervisors that knew about this prior, and others didn't, if there were supervisors that knew about this when we made the decision to move forward with Palmer's Creek LLC, and others didn't, I don't think that's right either. And I don't know if that's the case or not. It might not be.
I will tell you that I did not know about this until I, your email came out. Okay? So I just went and did it on my own. But I, it's your pleasure to do whatever you want to, sir. I don't think the applicant should be, I don't want to say punished, but because our staff may not have answered the question properly or got on top of it.
We do meet through two other times tonight before December 25th.
Fine, sir.
All right. We have a substitute motion on the floor by Mr. Skinner to accept number nine in the consent agenda, and approve it as is. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Nay.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Trampe?
Aye.
Chair's aye. No, nay, sorry. All right. So now we have the original motion to table this until...
When is our next meeting?
27th.
Will we have an opportunity? So I, there's two more meetings before your deadline. So potentially on the 27th, you could come back here and let the board know, give us some read-ahead material ahead of time, you know, legal precedent, other things that are associated with this. And we can have a chance to read on it, and we can make that potential decision on that next meeting or the following.
We'd be delighted to do that. If we could be provided with the specific questions, we'll respond as quickly as possible.
So I, I think the problem is that we know nothing about this. So I think you have to assume that some of the members of the board have never seen this before, know nothing about this, the process. And if you would provide us the information, we could go ahead and review it. And then we can ask you questions at the next meeting and determine whether or not to approve it.
Absolutely. We provided information that was included in the board packet, but...
I got zero information on this until this morning, okay?
Yeah, I don't know who you approved.
I made the motion to table until the next meeting.
All right. Motion on the floor to table till next meeting. Mr. Yakubowski?
Question.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you. So, specific questions, I, I've had this since last Thursday, when the board agenda came out. So I had read it at that point, and had remembered what had been done in the past. I'm not sure, and, and I'm explaining the reason why I'm going to vote against the, the table. I am not sure what other questions can be answered that have already not been provided here. I understand that there might be some desire to have more time to, to think about it, and that, that's perfectly okay. But I, I think that nothing else is going to be revealed. But if we're in the process of asking questions, can you please provide just a couple of examples of where this has been used in larger counties, Prince William and Fairfax, that have been used not only for workforce housing, but for a manufacturing or something else that is beyond the nonprofit, that could be an economic development incentive, so that we can potentially, potentially use that as, in, in the future?
Be happy to do that. In fact, I'm counsel to the Prince William IDA, and we've done a similar financing through that IDA for Bonaventure. So happy to provide as many examples, or try to answer any questions. We, we provided some additional information this week, I think in response to a question that Mr. Ross had about the executive summary, and we're happy to continue to try to be responsive to questions.
So with that as well, if you could include, why would a developer do this? What is the incentive for a developer to do this? I mean, what is the upside for them? So obviously, there's a reason they're doing this.
Right.
There's a financial reason for them to do it.
Sure. The interest rate is lower, because it's tax-exempt, but happy to expand upon that, however you'd like.
I will continue on the motion. Mr. Yakubowski?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampe?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
All right, we're at...
Chairman, that brings us to public presentations. Amy, do we have folks signed up?
Yes.
Run through the public presentation guidelines. Public presentations are opportunity for citizens to present matters you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Please sign up to speak at each public hearing separately. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet, and please sign up clearly. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name and voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes, or on behalf of a group you represent, in which case you'll have five minutes. Public presentation shall not be used to address matters that are subject to public hearing, or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcomed by the Board of Supervisors. Amy, who's first?
Russ Mueller, followed by John Vagnetti.
I'm Russ Mueller. Tonight, I'm from the Livingston District, and I'll speak on behalf of myself. First, I want to stress the conditions that I've requested be included. The S-Power S U P have been determined on good authority to meet the Virginia State legal test for reasonableness. The serious risks of this project have been scientifically documented, must be adequately mitigated, or I and a vast number of like-minded residents will have no choice but to oppose its approval, because the resulting harm will be in clear violation of the county zoning code that protects citizens and the environment against adverse consequences. To put it succinctly, to prevent harm, the special use permit must say, no burning, no cadmium-based solar panels, no chemicals, no biosalads, no phosphorus fertilizers, no property devaluation, no unsightly views, no traffic snarls, no power right-of, no S-Power right-ofways through private roads, no gimmicks to reduce the $35 to $50 million cost of decommissioning in the surty bond, no reductions to county revenues, no increased cost to taxpayers, no empty promises like phantom $600,000 payments, or money for a roundabout that the National Park Service opposes. I hope you get the drift from these comments and those I made since last January. You can call me Doctor No, but a project this unprecedented should not limit the review of a staff report by citizens and your own planning commission only a week or less before the December 5th hearing. Once set in motion, there is no do-over for this project, and the damages could be permanent. My daddy always said, "Measure twice, cut once." Unfortunately, S-Power has yet to produce all the details to allow for one measurement, much less two. So the first cut cannot be made at this time without severe consequences. For example, the latest S-Power GDP still shows only a 50-foot setback to vast areas of, of others' property lines. I would like to be shown how this project is going to directly benefit me and other Spotsy County residents sitting behind me. In conclusion, show me the money. So far, I've only seen the risks. Thank you in advance for any actions you may take to include the conditions in the September 25th documentation I have sent to you and all other county officials. Thank you.
John Vagnetti, followed by Nancy McNamara.
I'd just like to read a short email that I did send to the Board of Supervisors, but never got a response on. My name is John W. Vagnetti. I recently moved into the Fawn Lake community in anticipation of a tranquil and well-earned retirement in the historic and beautiful countryside of Spotsylvania County. Within a week of closing on my home, I was made aware of the planned development of a huge solar energy project, literally in the middle of what is arguably one of the most historic tracts of land in the country. I view this proposal as an abomination, the approval of which, in my view, would be a complete abdication of responsible stewardship and governance. The degradation of our quality of life with this monstrosity would impose, the degradation of our quality of life that this monstrosity would impose is painful to contemplate. The reality of this project is that the county would bear the consequences of all the negatives, real and potential of such a project throughout its projected life, while the alleged benefits to the county are, in my opinion, laughable. I would be happy to have my taxes increased to pay for my share of the advertised revenue and water system improvements. I know that other residents have told me they feel the same way. I sincerely and earnestly ask that this proposal be disapproved in its entirety. Period. Thank you, gentlemen.
Nancy McNamara, followed by Sean Fogarty.
My name is Nancy McNamara. I am in the Livingston District. Our family was categorized as outsiders when we located here in 2001. We visited many communities in the Mid-Atlantic region and chose Spotsylvania for retirement, primarily for historical and environmental reasons. It is understandable that regions change through special use permits, but a county blessed with history and features which attract tourists, residents, and businesses would not generally commit suicide. The very name Spotsylvania captures the root term sylvan, for abundance of trees, green life, and water. We are in the Chesapeake Bay region with rivers and lakes. These are now in danger with the current permit under request. I suggest that the supervisors who approve this permit hold a ceremony to take down the mural from the presiding wall, and that's the wall behind you, and rename the county Spotsolaria, for sunlight, when, when it occurs. To prepare for this, they might want to develop a budget projection on how this sunlight permit will be financed. The land will be dead once the factory of panels is built. In other cases, no one has ever, ever wanted to buy solar property after decommission. Expenses occur for all county residents, all county residents, under topics such as water supply, road repair, damages during duration, maintenance, quality control, you ever heard, quality control, removal of equipment, including underground debris, and repair or insurance for flooding, fire, and weather damage. It is ironical that this project, assumed to help the environment, does, does the opposite. A public forum held to educate the entire county and providing an independent expert as a speaker is a necessity. Dr. Herbert Eckelen at the University of North Carolina has offered to assist, but he was never called back, as it, after his offer. In our area of the USA, solar panels are not practical in such a large operation. We can put our assets to better use. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please hold your applause, so the next speaker can hear the name being called, and can we move this along?
Sean Fogarty, followed by Dave Hammond.
Sean Fogarty, Livingston District. I'm speaking for myself. This evening, I provided, and you should have copies in front of you, provided to the board my analysis of S-Power's three special use permits compliance with the county comprehensive plan. This is submitted in accordance with Virginia Code 15.2-2232, and I request that this analysis be included as part of Appendix A to the staff report. The analysis includes 15 provisions contained in Chapters 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6 that are violated by the applicant's proposal. It also includes a copy, which is the last page, it's also displayed on the monitor now, of the county's future land use map, with the applicant's three sites superimposed. As you can see from that chart on your monitors, this proposal will remove the largest agriculture and forestal land use tract in the county, and about one-quarter of the total agriculture and forestal land. That's the lightest green color on that map. The site just plops onto the largest tract in the whole county. The site just plops onto the largest tract in the whole county. This site would cover an area more than twice as large as the county's entire Ag Forestall District program, which contains 2,800 acres. It also directly conflicts with the desire to preserve the rural character of the county by placing a 3,500-acre industrial utility site in agriculturally-zoned land. Section 15.2-2232 of the Virginia Code requires that the location, character, and extent of the S-Power facility be submitted to and approved by the planning commission and the board as being substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. Last part is right out of the statute. The analysis that I provided concludes that the proposed special use is not compatible with the other land uses in that area of the county, and is not in accord with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Dave Hammond, followed by Mike Michalowsko.
Hi, my name is Dave Hammond. I live in the Livingston District, speaking for myself tonight. If we could go to the floor computer, please. I want to talk tonight about cadmium and my nightmare about cadmium. The picture is worth a thousand words. This is a photo from Puerto Rico last year after Hurricane Maria struck. Obviously, a major disaster. You can see the shape of that solar plant after that hit. And one of the concerns is, how do we clean this up? When this happens, what do we do now? S-Power's plan: wear gloves. They claim that all the cadmium remains encapsulated in a panel, but they haven't provided any scientific proof that we've asked for. If you go to the next page, this encapsulation, as far as I'm concerned, is an unproven claim. They write about it in their safety report that's on the website. My key question is, how is anything encapsulated above a single sheet of plastic? We'll go to the next page, the interest of time. This is a diagram out of one of their submittals, in their safety diagram. The left is a conventional crystalline silicon panel inside a frame, and you can see—I got circled—the two layers of plastic. So you can imagine a sandwich between two layers of plastic. The cell material is in between that, and you can see how that could be encapsulated. On the right is a thin film configuration. It's completely different. It has only a single layer of plastic above the bottom sheet of glass. If you go back to the previous page, please, the photo shows conventional panels on the left, the thin film on the right, and you can see the difference in configuration. And these thin film panels, once they get broken free from their frames, they roll up and they'll disperse all over the site. Going forward to the last page, if you would, please. The conclusion—the last page, the next one, please. My conclusion is, it's not necessary to take this risk to the public health. There are better alternatives available. And the simple solution is simply prohibit the use of the thin film panels. This is what Culpeper has done in their—in the solar plant that they recently approved, the Board of Supervisors recently approved by a thin margin. And they didn't just prohibit cadmium-containing panels, they prohibited all thin film panels. And it's written in as one of their conditions. So that's my message for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mike Michalowska, followed by Vivian Stanley.
I'll just bring up that monitor. My name is Mike Michalowsko. I am a resident of Livingston District. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I approved my message. I have a number of concerns about S-Power, but I want to concentrate solely on construction traffic congestion. S-Power has proposed as the main artery using historic Orange Plank Road to get to their entry sites 1 and 2, but they haven't written up any traffic mitigation plan. They've made only modest proposals, like carpooling, restricting construction traffic to business hours, and proposing that we destroy the historic intersection of Brock Road and Orange Plank Road by putting a roundabout there. Although, they're not proposing to help fund this until 12 months after completion of their project, which doesn't do anything to alleviate traffic—or mitigate traffic congestion. What I am suggesting is an alternate route—which I've—which is on the second page of the handout that I gave you, and which is shown up here on the monitors. All of the construction traffic and employee traffic would go along Route 3 to the intersection with Route 20, down Route 20 to Goldale, and then from Goldale to Orange Plank to entry sites 1 or 2. This would have several advantages. First of all, it would alleviate any more congestion on already overburdening Orange Plank Road. And there have been plenty of accidents on Orange Plank Road. A neighbor's caretaker just had an encounter with a lumber truck just a week ago, and there have been a fatality at the intersection of Route 3 and Orange Plank. Number two, it would remove entirely this preposterous idea of taking this historic intersection and putting a roundabout on top of it, which, as you know, belongs to the National Park Service and would literally take an act of Congress to change. And finally, it would reduce the distance that construction vehicles would have to travel from approx—on a narrow road, on a narrow two-lane road—from approximately eight miles—which is shown in red along Orange Plank—to about four-and-a-half miles from Goldale down to Orange Plank to entry sites 1 and 2. I'm asking that this route be part of the special use permit. And in addition, I'm asking that the applicant S-Power write up a complete traffic mitigation plan which is submitted and approved before starting construction, that it incur any costs for improvement or damage to any of the roads used, and that finally, that it be prohibited from using a road on private property, whether a single home or a development. I ask you that you put all of these requirements into the special use permit before proceeding.
Vivian Stanley, followed by Richard Jinnell.
Vivian Stanley, Livingston District. I want to tell you about the poisoning deaths of entire communities. The communities were in Nazi Germany. Hundreds of thousands of people were taken to the death camps built by the Nazis, executed, poisoned, or starved to death for no other reason that they were—only that they were considered of no value. We now have a handful of people who have pledged to do the best—and I mean "best" in capital letters—for the entire community, and we are trusting that you do so. Allowing a death camp to be built in the middle of a Livingston community of 18,000 people is not the best. Cadmium and other toxins in our air, water, and soil is not the best. It only takes small amounts of cadmium to be toxic to humans. It would be morally reprehensible to not care about the health and well-being of an entire community. The only difference between the Nazi Germans' death camp and the S-Power death camp is that the Nazis built the camp and then put the people in it. We already have the people, and now S-Power wants to put the death camp right in the middle of us. In the Livingston District, the people are already there, and the camp would be built in the middle of the community of those considered by some to have no significant value. Which one of the Board of Supervisors—and you know who you are—told me that we have no significance? Never in my lifetime did I think that the atrocities of the Germans would be repeated anywhere in the United States of America. This is a country I love. I moved down here to Spotsy County because I thought that's where I was going, to a place I would be proud to be living. Now, someone wants to make it a poisonous hellhole. I hope that all of you people, when you vote, you remember that your vote indicates your moral character.
Richard Jinnell, followed by Judy Jinnell.
Richard Jinnell, Livingston District, speaking on my own behalf. My comments concern the S-Power/Swinerton Emergency Response Plan dated the 28th of September 2018. Several issues grab your attention if you read the plan from the point of view of a person who lives on the periphery of these sites with large arrays of solar panels 50 feet from your property line. One of the first things you notice is the plan is very general and generic, not detailed enough to be an actionable plan. There's no mention of the possibility of a fire originating on one of the three sites and burning out to the residential areas on the periphery. There's no mention of onsite firefighting capability for a combined area the size of the city of Fredericksburg. No fire detection system onsite to alert fire stations to the existence and specific location of a fire. Sites are to be minimally manned, as few as two people, and not 24/7. Local fire stations are a minimum of five miles from the sites with a limited number of controlled access gates. Wildfires can travel as fast as one mile every four minutes. Firefighters will not be able to reach the scene of the fire before it burns to residential areas on the periphery. Isles between solar panels are not wide enough and do not have sufficient weight-bearing capability for large, heavy firefighting equipment to pass. There's no hydrant system on the site. Water and wet chemical fire retardants cannot be used to fight fires under or near solar panels because of the risk of electrocution. Electrical arcing from equipment faults, manufacturing imperfections, and lightning strikes increase the probability of fires. Large open areas with high heat and humidity and the presence of conductive material are prone to lightning strikes. Emergency response plan does not include requirements for grounding and surge protection for solar arrays and inverters. Knee-high native grasses to be planted on the sites to prevent soil erosion, and 2,850 acres of forested natural area that will remain on the sites provide abundant fuel for wildfires, especially in periods of hot, dry summer weather. The special use permit must require that S-Power provide grounding and surge protection and onsite fire detection and firefighting capability. Thank you.
Judy Jinnell, followed by Irv Boils.
Hello, I'm Judith Jinnell. I live in Livingston District. I'm speaking for myself. Sorry about that. I think allowing S-Power to use thin film panels containing cadmium telleride is an unnecessary risk. There are better, more efficient alternatives that do not contain cadmium. We can debate how great the risk may be, but why take unnecessary risks? S-Power stated in the community meeting in October that they are planning to use a 50/50 mix of First Solar Series 6 panels, which contain cadmium telleride, and Jinko Monoper panels, which are crystalline silicone and do not contain any cadmium. The First Solar data sheet shows an efficiency of 17% to 18%—those are the ones with cadmium. The Jinko Solar data sheet for their panels shows an efficiency of 19.38 to 2-point—pardon me, 20.38%. And these are the panels that'll be used in the recently-approved industrial solar power plant in Culpeper. Therefore, the crystalline silicone panels are, on average, 14% more efficient. That means that the solar panels will cover 14% less land. That means a reduction of almost 500 acres from S-Power's plan to cover the 3,500 acres with panels. Just think of the benefits, and less risk to the environment for muddy runoff with the panels on a smaller area. The ability to provide much greater setbacks from all neighboring properties, probably even more than the 300 feet that the concerned citizens are requesting. There's no risk of cadmium contaminating soil and water, and should the panels catch fire, the cadmium—it's aerosolized cadmium—which is a risk to firefighters and the residential area around the solar farm. So we are requesting that the S U P state that they must only use the—no cadmium telleride panels, only the crystalline silicone panels. Thank you.
Irv Boils, followed by Kathleen Hayden.
I'm Irv Boils, Livingston District. I'm speaking on my own behalf, and that's—my concern now is, as we look at the proposed installation by S-Power, what we're not seeing is the whole picture. But I think this Board has a responsibility to look at not only what S-Power is proposing, but you need to look at it in the context of its interface with Dominion Power and bigger picture, the electric grid itself for the country. As you know, electric grid has been considered by the federal government as being very vulnerable to all kinds of damage and attacks, including cyber attacks, as well as things like high-power microwaves and electromagnetic pulses, and even solar storms. And what my concern is now, what happens when you have 500 megawatts of power being generated every day? And when it gets to S-Power, it gets to the Dominion Power, what happens? How is that—if the electric grid goes down and the power station itself has no way of accepting that power, where does it go? Well, you get power overloads, and power overloads immediately are going to start blowing out every transformer, inverter, substation around, which releases toxic materials. All of them have toxic materials in them. And so the concern is that this Board needs to look at this context beyond just S-Power's proposal, but look at it from the standpoint of that interface with the Dominion Power and the electric grid itself. My concern is that we have due diligence on that whole picture, and not just looking at what S-Power is proposing. Thank you.
Kathleen Hayden, followed by Kevin McCarthy.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Hayden. I live in the Livingston District, and I am speaking for myself tonight. I'd like to express my concerns about the proposed solar farm's impact on property values and county tax revenue. In addition to being a neighbor of this proposed solar farm, I'm a Realtor, and I have some insight into what this will do to property values. What is important to understand is that the perception of risk will drive buyers' decisions about purchases. I have already had buyers decide not to see homes for sale near these proposed sites. It was not an issue of them losing their view. Setbacks in landscaping are not going to solve this problem. What worried them was the size of the project and the unknown environmental and health risks associated with a solar farm of this size. They don't want to live near or have to try to resell a home with potential problems. They've chosen to buy somewhere else. Obviously, homes that can't be sold lose substantial value. This would not only be catastrophic to area homeowners, but would also be a significant loss of tax revenue for the county. Fawn Lake alone pays approximately $4.7 million annually in county taxes. There's a study of a community similar to Fawn Lake in North Carolina that showed homes lost an average of 30% of their assessed value after a solar farm was built next to it. Even a 10% drop in Fawn Lake values is almost half a million dollars lost to taxes every year. This does not include the building lots, which won't be developed, either because S-Power is buying them, or because others simply won't buy them. They account for an additional $2.3 million loss every year. This is not a rural area, as S-Power likes to describe it. Even in the agriculturally-zoned areas, there are hundreds of other homes surrounding this 10-square-mile area. They will all suffer value loss as well, perhaps even more because they are on well water. If buyers believe there might even be a chance of wells drying up or being contaminated— If buyers believe there might even be a chance of wells drying up or being contaminated, they will not buy the home. This project could cost the county millions of dollars annually in lost property taxes. It certainly poses huge financial, health, and welfare risks to thousands of county residents and the environment. With no precedent for a solar farm of this size in a populated area, I don't believe these risks can be denied or mitigated. In my opinion, the only responsible decision this board can make is to deny the special use permit entirely. Thank you.
Kevin McCarthy, followed by John Kosch.
Kevin McCarthy, Livingston, speaking as an individual. I've been advised that some members of the Planning Commission and the Board won't care about what's going on in Australia, Germany, New York, California, or anywhere else. They'll only care about what's right here in front of them in Spotsylvania. I hope that's not true. A board of supervisors needs to see the big picture. When asked to permit 10-square-miles of forest zone lands to be turned into the 10th-largest solar power plant in the world, we should ask, okay, where are the other nine? What's going on there? Learning from others' mistakes would avoid Spotsylvania falling for the same scam. We need to see what used to be the forest for what used to be the trees. 10-square-miles, 2 million trees cleared in favor of 2 million solar panels. Just a quick summary of a few data points. One, everywhere solar or wind goes, trouble follows: higher electricity prices, higher taxes, grid instability, blackouts, brownouts, more natural gas or coal plants built to back up solar. Dominion plans eight new natural gas plants partly for this purpose. Number two, some states and entire countries are backpedaling from renewables. New England, Canada, Germany, Japan, Spain, China, and the blunder down under, Australia, and on, and on, and on. Number three, the scammers continue to ply their con game. Lemmings play along, taxpayers lose. A couple of sample headlines. Renewable energy mandates make poor people poorer. And my favorite, from Harvard University of all places. We put up panels where the subsidies are, not where the sun is. Number four, voters and astute elected officials are awakened. Last week, election day ballot initiatives in several green energy states in further support of renewables or climate mandates failed. Number five, the Trump administration's apparently going in a different direction. Couple of sample headlines. President Trump signs the Nuclear Energy Innovation Capabilities Act to enable civilian research and development of advanced nuclear energy. Number six, the solar industry is a subsidized boondoggle. When the subsidies are gone, the gold rush will be over, and the LLCs will likewise be long gone. I've attached to your... I outlined two succinct summaries published just this month. One, green energy is the perfect scam. Two, twilight of the green follies. They're great summaries. Number seven, the land grab is going on all over the country with concerned citizens in Spotsylvania, Culpeper, Page, Augusta County, all Virginia, Dorchester County, Maryland, Lamar County, Georgia, West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, Long Island, New York, Seneca, Ohio, and Independence, Missouri. My favorite, Harry Truman's Rockwood Golf Club, where he played golf, is now a solar farm. This industry should take its dog and pony show, its traveling con game, and get out of town.
John Kosch, followed by Dan Kulig. Dan Kulig. Followed by Barbara Edwards.
My name is Dan Kulig. I live in the Livingston District, and I'm speaking for myself. I'd like to change the little tone here and talk about process and the process that your staff is going through to try to put together a SUP. They're going to do that from county regulations, state regulations, and a proposal from S-Power as to what they're going to do. So, let's take a quick look at that. S-Power says they're going to build from a GDP dated March of this year, and its update date is blank, but latest version was in June. It still has, as we've discussed earlier, the 50-foot easements all around that even though S-Power has made wonderful statements about how they're going to provide bigger easements. Also, there are some calculations that were provided for erosion control, but the DEQ says that the only regulations that exist are the Virginia Stormwater Management Act and Handbook, and that contains nothing about solar panels. So, while these calculations were submitted by S-Power, then none of their assumptions or backup data was submitted, so I find it, as an engineer, totally impossible to review these. As was already discussed in the transportation plan, there are problems with that, but one problem that wasn't discussed is that your staff has asked twice in writing and has received no answer to where the railhead is going to be that's going to land all this heavy equipment so that the route from that railhead to the development site will be known. Your staff has no clue, but they're writing an SUP. They were... S-Power has been very clear about the water. They say that they're going to use your county water that they're going to help you pay for as long as it's available when they start construction. But if it's not, through no fault of their own, they're totally free to use the wells they've drilled for 180 consecutive days, which means they could use it for six months, skip a couple of days, use it for another six months, even though you guys possess in your hands a document that says using well water is detrimental to the aquifer of this county. And as far as the decommissioning plan is, that thing is so controversial, it's been discussed, and I won't repeat anything here about that one. The last six of these conditions on here, four of them is what my father would consider a bribe. Today, they're called a proffer, and I'm sure the county attorney will tell you how we squeakily clean, turn proffers into gifts and things that are legal. But still, my dad would call it a bribe, and most of us in this room probably would too. So, I don't understand how your staff can provide an SUP by December 5th to the Planning Commission that has any... bears any resemblance to anything S-Power is planning to do.
Sir, I apologize, but your time has elapsed.
Barbara Edwards. Followed by Mo Beer.
Hello, I'm Barb Edwards, and I'm speaking on my own behalf, and I'm from the Livingston District. And I'm opposing the mega-solar plant for all the reasons that other people have so eloquently expressed: for the watershed reasons, the environmental impact, the view shed, the fact that it's such a huge scope, 6,500 acres of land. Also, basing decisions on biased studies done by S-Power doesn't make sense to me. Well, and I strongly believe this county must require S-Power to post a surety bond to cover the full cost to ensure that the site is restored when it's no longer viable. Now, we know that, you know, solar panels have, at best, maybe a 20-year warranty. And so, when it's time for the site to be restored, we want to make sure that they're responsible to do it. If not done, I believe Spotsylvania County will lose many tax-paying, home-owning citizens who now realize that we and our children will be the ones paying for the 6,500-acre solar plant cleanup that we begged you not to build in the first place. I'm against the mega-solar plant because of the health risks, the financial risks, and the truth that it would reveal that our county government is beholden to big business and not the interests of its citizens. Thank you.
Mo Beer, followed by Peter Donnis.
My name is Michael O'Beer, 11201, Chancellor Meadows Lane. What I provided for you tonight is one article from the Forest Department about burning, and the other one is an article from the Freelance Star in 2017 about the aquifer in the state of Virginia, about the decline in water in the state. And what I have here is the Virginia Water Resource Law dated 2015. It says, "Water usage for energy, production, agricultural, industrial, and others become more difficult resulting in winners and losers." Well, we're going to be losers. Preferred legal action for water without regards to water availability is the problem we have here. They've said they're going to use so many millions of gallons of water a day. Their aquifer, it's not going to mandate it, it's not going to have it. It says, "Under 62.1," it says in Virginia Code, "the power facilities take lower priority to existing users." That's us. We're the ones who are using the water now. It means that their priority is nothing. That's like Spotsylvania's going to be when it's finally done. Saying continuing unregulated usage of groundwater is contributing to pollution, shortages of groundwater, and human health. All water resources throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia are at a public low, and that's under Code 62.1. Unless fundamental changes to the Virginia Codes are adopted, the current management practices considering the aquifer system may continue to decline, and water sources in Virginia will continue to threaten for all. If they use water from our wells, especially mine's a shallow well, and I'm 50-foot away from the property line, if they continue to draw the amount of water that they want, my well will be done. The volume of water they have, they said they're going to tie onto the county water supply coming out of the reservoir. Well, I've been here all my life. I've seen the reservoir where you could walk across it. Then what's the rest of Spotsylvania going to do? I'm already having to buy bottled water either, or have y'all supply it for me, you know? Because if you don't, who's going to supply water? Y'all have an obligation to my family's safety, health, and welfare, and if you pass this thing, y'all have no other choice but to supply me water and probably health insurance. Thank you.
Peter Donnis, followed by Heather Donnis.
Good evening. My name is Peter Donnis, Marshall District. I'm speaking for myself. I have a change of topic. I don't want to talk about the solar project. A lot of people have talked about that. I want to talk about the Department of Social Services here in Spotsylvania. My wife and I were foster parents for two boys who were under the legal guardianship of the Spotsylvania DSS. These boys were removed from our home with no warning, no justification, no reason given. This took place on Friday, August 31st. Two days before that, the DSS worker made a home visit. They were there for about two hours, which is a long time for a home visit. During the whole time they were there, the two boys were very agitated, were clearly uncomfortable in the presence of the DSS worker and the other workers that were there. After the DSS worker, the other workers left, one boy was so upset that he urinated all over our floor, which he'd never done before, and ran around and wanted to lock all the doors to, as he said, keep the kidnappers out. Two days after that happened, that was Wednesday, August 29th. Friday, August 31st, my wife and I took the boys to school. They had invitations with them to give to friends for a birthday party that we had for one of them. His birthday was the following Friday. We had laser tag set up. That was the last we saw of them. They were taken from the school. We never got to see him again. We've had no contact with them since. This was after, during the home visit on the 29th, the DSS worker approved us taking the boys to Hershey Park that weekend. That was going to be Labor Day weekend. We had a family event we were going to go to, but before that, we wanted to take them to Hershey Park. The DSS worker approved that, so the boys were looking forward to that. They were also looking forward to going to the beach with us. Couple weeks later, we had another family event. Of course, those things never happened because they were taken. We've asked for an explanation from the DSS. They're the legal guardians. They made this decision. We've gotten no explanation. Everything we saw, you know, from them indicates to us that the DSS is not acting in the best interest of these children. We even... we don't know if they were... if the original taking from their family was justified. We, you know, we can't have confidence in anything that they told us. So, we want an explanation from them, and we want them to be forced to do their job, which is to look after the best interest of the children. If their children are in a home where they belong, or if they belong with their family, they should be with their family. They shouldn't be yanking these children around for no good reason. Thank you.
Heather Donnis, followed by Alfred King.
Hi, I'm Heather Donnis. I'm the wife of Peter Donnis, and both of us went through training to be licensed to be foster parents. Children are our life. I'm a retired social worker. I worked in the prevention of abuse and neglect of children for 20 years. My whole family loves children. We had the two boys. We were approved. We got licensed. We had two boys for three weeks. When the boys first came to us, they were both diagnosed with double depression and suicidality. We were given no support from DSS, no services. We were told that they have a therapist, they have doctors. One was on medication that he did not want to take, he told me. We were not given any names or numbers of any therapist or doctors to call, or we weren't given who the GAYL was, which is the children's lawyers. We weren't told who the castle worker is, which is the child's advocate, supposed to advocate for them. We've never spoken to any of them. We had them for three weeks, and we didn't get any services, but the children thrived in our care. We took them to laser tag, roller skating, trampolining, fireworks. We had ice cream with them, took them to the movies. We had took them to dinner. We had made some hors with them. They played with our dogs. They were starting to be happy. They were starting to be... starting to laugh, starting to play, things that we hadn't seen when they first came to our care. They were eating and asking for seconds. They were sleeping well. On August 29th, the workers came to our home for two hours. They each took turns taking each of the children alone somewhere in our house. The children did not want to go. I said, you know, be a nice host. I didn't know why they were taking them. Maybe they wanted to talk to them. After two hours, the children were hungry also. It was 6 o'clock. I said, you know, I gave them booze to try to get them dinner. I said, they need dinner. But they were there for two hours. At the end of the two hours, immediately right when the door closed, the younger one peed all over the floor. And he ran around the house screaming, saying he wants to keep the kidnappers out. And I asked the other one, what's going on? And the other one just stared at the wall. We reassured them for two days. There are no kidnappers. We don't know... we didn't know any history of them either. So, we're thinking maybe something. I don't know. We reassured them for two days that they were safe in their school.
Ms. Donnis, your time has expired.
Alfred King, followed by Blaine Todd.
Alfred King, Livingston District. I'll tell you, those are two hard presentations to follow, so I hope you'll bear with me. There are two things that I'd like to discuss about the solar farm. First, there is apparently a state requirement that the county respond to the applicant within one year. That 12-month period is coming fairly close to a point where you have to make a decision. The state law, however, does not require you to give them an affirmative answer. All you have to do is give them an answer. Based on all the conversations and discussions today, it would appear that there are more questions than answers. And until a lot of these reasonable questions are answered by the applicant, I think you should turn the application down. The second thing is that... The second thing is that the financial impact of this development is going to be a significant loss of county revenue. And any supervisor who is in favor of the project had better be prepared to explain to their constituents why we should subsidize a $10 billion company, AES, which owns S-Power, and Microsoft, which is a five or six or 700 billion company. Why should we, as taxpayers, raise our taxes to pay for lower cost power for Microsoft? It makes no sense. I understand that the county cannot ask for profits by law, but citizens can ask for remediation. And I think that S-Power should be requested to build a fire, build and man a fire station right near the place where the solar farm will be. They should pay for the upgrade of the water system 100% and not be allowed to start construction until that water system is in place. And finally, the county should be given a reduction in its electric power invoicing for the reason that we're subsidizing Microsoft and AES. We should get some benefit out of it ourselves. Thank you.
Blaine Todd, followed by Wanda Morris.
My name is Blaine Todd, and I live in Font Lake. And having listened to everyone that's spoken tonight, what's in it for us as citizens in Spotsylvania County? Why do we give a damn about S-Power and then their impact? And power companies do start fires. And if everybody's aware, California's burning. And who burned it? Pacific Gas and Electric. And they said on Bloomberg, they don't have enough insurance to pay. Today, by noon, their stock was off by 40%. The power companies can cause problems. Cadmium aerosol by fire is dangerous. And I don't see what's in it for Spotsylvania County. Why do we want it? Solar is not an effective way to go. If we're serious, we'd follow France and the rest of our country and put about 60 nuclear plants in place. Solar's a joke, a tax scheme, subsidy. And my question is, has an independent engineering impact study been performed that we can rely on, that you can rely on? I can say this for the people in Font Lake. My background is in engineering and law, and we will aggressively pursue actions in state and federal district court to prevent this, if we have to. Thank you.
My name's Wanda Morris, and I'm returning to you again. I come forward asking the board for your assistance. I'm concerned, I'm with Kevin Marshall's district, Lancaster Gate, and my concern is with DSS. You heard Heather and Peter talk. Those two grandchildren are mine. DSS took those children June of 2017, and I've been fighting ever since. I didn't meet them until, I guess, well, I met them tonight. I've talked to them a couple nights ago. They saw the Spotsylvania video back on the 23rd of October, and they contacted me. To my surprise, those were my two grandsons they had. Those boys have been moved five times. DSS, they have this excuse that I can't raise these kids because I don't know how to set boundaries. Tell me what that means. Show me in federal law, code of federate, whatever. Show me where it defines boundaries. If they're going to say I don't know how to set boundaries, tell me what it is. Tell me what I need to do. Show me what I need to do. Give me the chance to do these things. You don't just take my four grandchildren out of my home and move them around like they're checkers. And they, they do think of them as kidnappers. When they pulled those children out of my house, they literally picked them up and had their hands and legs flailing and removed them out of my house. You know, DSS, I don't know what it is about that agency. Nobody will speak out against DSS. I had an attorney that represented me for over a year. He was glad to take my money, but you know what he told me? Just, just be quiet. Just do what they say, and we'll have our day in court. We go to court, you know what Judge Feinstahl says? Well, I've already made up my decision. I don't need to hear a thing you have to say. So you know what? My day in court never happened. So to this day, I have not seen my kids since April 28th. They are up for adoption. And so we go to court on Monday, and that may be the last time that I ever get the chance to talk out about my grandkids because they're trying to take parental rights away from my daughter and her son. The boundaries, they've done cut me off from her, and I am not allowed to see them, talk to them, text them. I have no trespassing order against them. What else do they want me to do? Kill them? Is that what they want me to do? Is that their idea of boundaries? I asked for the board's help in looking into this. What is boundaries? Tell me what it is.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Is there anybody that did not sign up to speak that wishes to come forward to speak now? Come forward.
Hi, my name is Kevin Shadell. I live in Livingston District, Font Lake resident, speaking on my own behalf. First, I wanted to say, obviously, all the speakers before me have made very comprehensive, detailed arguments, provided documentation. I absolutely concur with their recommendations and their conclusions and would ask that the special use permit not be approved. If it is to be moved forward and approved, I wanted to share some different concerns than I've heard thus far. First, my understanding is that the ownership is made up of a large number of limited liability companies that have invested. Invested primarily for the purpose of the subsidies and the tax credits, et cetera. That worries me for my own business expense for several reasons. One is that the purpose of forming limited liability companies is to limit your liability. And my guess certainly is, if they have smart enough lawyers, is that the only assets that those limited liability companies have are what is installed on that land. So should, should things go wrong, and something always goes wrong, the recourse, I think, is very slim to none, and will bear, the citizens of Spotsylvania County will bear the cost. So in my prior life, I was a design, construction, and development manager for a large oil company, and we had to get special use permits all the time. And I can tell you, on behalf of my client at the time, we want those conditions and terms in special use permits to be as vague as possible. And we want to give up any commitments to dollars, whether it be for bonds or what have you, to be as optimistically minimum or nonexistent as possible. And so when things go bad, which on occasion they did, in my particular instance, the company was a very strong company and took care of things, but for a group of limited liability companies, I think we're going to get stuck. And then lastly, I would say that the tax incentives and subsidies, once the tax incentives are gone, and with the current administration, I think it's only a matter of time before they are gone, the economic model needs to make-
Sir, your time has expired.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak at this time? We'll close public presentations. Board reports. Mr. Schindler?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Well, the only thing I want to report on tonight is, S-Power is obviously going to be meeting with the planning on, I believe it's December 5th. And I know they're, they're probably in a bind and everything, but there are so many things that are going on out there right now. And, and I've spoken much with the people at Font Lake. I've spoken with S-Power. And what I think we really need to do right now is if we could have a work session with our planning department, with our consultants that we have that have been hired to help us with this and everything, because there's so much information out there right now. And, you know, I do know they said that reclamation on this land, once it's put in, would take a minimum of five years to, and that would, that would take a lot of fertilization and, you know, revitalizing the land, and nothing would grow on it for at least five years. So there's a lot of issues, plus the comprehensive plan that we've got out there. I think this board, along with the planning board, Planning Commission, I think it's necessary now that we move forward as far as, let's, let's ask these questions. I'm very concerned about the revenue that will be coming. We're talking about adding a tax to it, yet the state, which, which one has priority? Which one governs the most? 80% exemption from the state? What we can do? What our county revenue's going to be? As I said, traffic mitigation, fire breaks that they are planning to put in. And again, the silicon, the silicone is better than the, the other one. It's, it doesn't have as much harmfulness. So my recommendation, I'm asking this board, if we couldn't put something together by the next meeting on the 27th of work session, invite the planning commissioners here, and let's spend some time as far as finding where we're at, what S-Power is, because you know what? There's probably 50 concerns out there, and yet I think every one of those concerns need to be put in writing by S-Power so that we know that whatever comes of it, we know exactly what we're getting, what it's going to be worth. Is it a risk? Certainly going to be a risk, I think, for the county. And I'm just not sure if I'm ready for 1.8 million solar panels to come here. And it's not in my district, but stuff of that nature, yeah. But hey, just, no, I didn't say that for that. I said because I'm open-minded, and I'm hoping that everyone out here, we need to know the facts. You've brought up so many good points, and I know we've worked together out there to find out what's going on, but, you know, it's something that these board, us as a board, really need to know. We need to know all the facts before we make any decision, and I don't want to be backed in a corner because the time is needed for S-Power to meet their goals with Microsoft or whoever it might be. And so I'm asking that if the county staff can give us just an update, if nothing more, exactly, because I've got a lot of questions that I can send them, that I would be, and I'd be happy to copy all of the board members here on all these issues, and there's quite a few out there. If you take a look at your papers that you got tonight, you'll find that there's quite a few concerns out there that we, we need to get answered. And I just don't think, I don't want to move too fast because S-Power needs us to do that. I don't think that's the right way to do it. So if, without obligation, without any objection from this board, I would like to have the staff come back on the 27th and, and give us where we stand, what S-Power's given, what we're going to require as far as in writing, if we should approve it or if we turn it down. We know exactly what we're turning down at the same time. Can we do that?
Certainly. If we can have a, if we can collect, please, the areas of concern, I think it'd be helpful to have the planning staff come and articulate what their current information, what their current status is with information from the applicant, from the consultants, or any other sources that they have in their staffing of the project, and maybe clarify or add some information for the board's benefit on the various points.
I think it'd also give the citizens a chance to see what's been updated when talking to S-Power, what they've offered, stuff of that nature. But this is the biggest thing that's probably happened to Spotsylvania, first big deal like this. And I'm not, like I said, there's a lot of concerns out there. The people of Font Lake have done a good job, and they're studying and everything. I think there are solutions out there for some of the concerns that you have, but you do have, I think burning is one of them. And that's why we need, as a board, to find out exactly where we're going, what we're going to require if we should do it, and if not, what, what we're losing and the benefits. But just general facts that we, as a board, need to know, and I don't think we've got there yet. So if that's okay with the board, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
I'm assuming it's okay. I'm not hearing anything different. Mr. Marshall, you have a report?
Actually, Mr. Chair, what I was going to ask, too, is that, you know, for the, for a number of meetings now, we've had a lot of citizens' input, and there's been a lot of issues brought up to us about various, you know, whether it's cadmium, or water, or fire, and all these things. I'm hoping that we have a running list of all these questions. If we don't, we should generate that. But then there, you know, on the other side, S-Power should have been able to respond to each one of those things. So here's all the concerns. Here's S-Power's position on each one of the concern. And we have a consultant that we're paying, should be to go back and be the arbiter of them to say, yes, no, I agree, or, and then we find out where the areas are that we agree or don't agree, and then determine whether or not this project moves forward.
You're out of order, number one.
So, you know, I do understand that the money was provided to the county, but the county independently hired consultants. So, so it didn't cost taxpayers money to hire the consultant. So I, it should be an independent consultant that's violating between the two issues. But I just want to make sure that we have, because we haven't received a presentation yet either. So all of these concerns have not been brought to the board yet. We haven't had a presentation from S-Power to go ahead and say, yes, no, maybe, or where we're at. So that's what I'm hoping on the 27th, that you can at least start laying all those things out so we can at least have a, you know, a position to part from. Does that make sense?
It certainly does. I would expect that we should be able to provide some information based on the progress to date with the consultants and with the staff work. And I think we need to be careful, and I'll be working with Carl to make sure that we're not violating the usual and prescribed land, process for land use cases, because we don't want this to substitute for the staff report or the staff analysis that will come before the board in due course in the process. But I'm sure that there is information that planning staff has as they're preparing their reports for the Planning Commission that will address a suspect number of these issues, and we'll bring that forward.
And if we could, please invite the planning commissioners here. And that is because they've got the meeting on November, I mean, December 5th. So at least they need to have some of this information upfront, because even at the November 5th, there's going to be a lot of, lot of information put out there, and I don't think they're going to be able to make a decision without, unless they've got prior information.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
I've got only one thing, and Mr. McGlocken, I apologize if you have this on your board report. It's in your district. Chancellor High School varsity girls field hockey has won a state championship, another state championship for Spotsylvania County, which is very good. I'd like to be able to invite them to be recognized by the board supervisors at the next meeting, if nobody on the board has any objections.
No objections. Dr. Tramby?
One point, and I hope my information is accurate. It's my understanding that the public hearing regarding solar, solar power tax exemption that we authorized tonight pertains to a, a county initiative done by the county for a tax exemption- we authorized tonight pertains to a county initiative done by the county for a tax exemption for those who have solar panels on their house or business, providing power to their own property. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't think that affects S-Power either way. And as several people have mentioned this evening, the, there is an 80% exemption for large solar facilities from machine and tool taxes put on by the state. And of course, we cannot do anything about that. We don't get to overrule the state. If Mr. Cole would like to address that point, that'd be fine.
The code does not affect solar panels on people's houses. These are for solar power generation facilities. And in the current Spotsylvania code, those qualifying facilities would basically be tax exempt from local taxes. They'd be treated like a church. And so that's what would be the subject of the public hearing, is repealing that tax, local tax exemption. Now, there is state tax exemptions for like 80% of the equipment and stuff that, you know, that would go into a solar facility, that that's mandated by state code, and you have no, no control over that. But back in 2007, the Board of Supervisors adopted a tax exemption for solar, 100% tax exemption for solar facilities. And no, nobody has claimed that tax exemption, because there are no qualifying solar facilities within the county, according to the Commissioner of Revenue. And so the, the public hearing that's coming up, I think in the December meeting, I think that's when it is, but would be to whether or not you, because I know at least a couple of supervisors have asked us to look at that tax exemption and may want to repeal that tax exemption, so that any facility would be taxed as allowed by state law.
I misunderstood that. Thank you for clarifying. Mr. Yakubowski, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, that never happens. That's okay.[754.29][754.29](LAUGHING) Two things. One, I was able to attend the groundbreaking for the addition to the YMCA on Tuesday. It was a great event, even though it was raining out, we still were able to turn dirt with the little old shovels, which was nice. And had some speakers there talking about the history of the YMCA with the county and how it's gone back many years, and I look forward to the Y continuing to grow and to serve our community. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and without board objection, I'd ask staff to bring this back after the new year. We finally went ahead and have a strategic plan where the opening statement under our vision is we will set the standard for Virginia counties. And I think it's a powerful statement, I think it's a necessary statement, but I think that we need to have something behind that. So I would ask staff to put together a plan where we can direct each department to come up with goals and ways that they can actually set the standard for Virginia counties, so that they're not just words on a page, but they actually mean something. And by doing so, I think that we will show other counties around Virginia just how we can do the job of local government, which is basically providing service the best that it possibly can be. So just because we've done something some way forever doesn't mean that we need to continue to do it that way forever. We need to get better at what we're doing, and always keeping the taxpayers in mind, but knowing that services are needed, and counties like ours that are growing are continuing to take on more responsibilities to include transportation and our transportation network. So as we continue to move forward, we need to make sure that we are doing it the best that we possibly can do, but also setting that standard that we have placed in our strategic plan right at the beginning. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Real quick, no, thanks, Mr. Marshall. Actually, it's in Salem District, Chancellor High School, Chancellor Elementary's in Cortlandt District, so I don't get either one of them, so. But I just want to say, Miles, I appreciate you coming out tonight and leading us on the pledge, but you've met the requirement. So I think, hopefully you got a good feel for local government here, so I'll sign that requirement off on you. So thanks again, that's all I have.
Mr. Ross?
I just have one thing, and that's for Fredericksburg Christian School. High school team is going to be playing in a Division II state championship playoff this Saturday, King George County. So they're playing against the only team that beat them. They're seeded number one, but the team that they're playing beat them this year. So it should be an exciting game out at King George High School. That's all I've got.
And Chair has no report.
That's at 7:00 PM, Mr. Skinner.
All right, Mr. Taylor, we have a presentation of the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance.
Yes, sir. Curry Roberts is here with an update, activities from the regional alliance.
All right, we're going to take about a five-minute recess. You can keep on doing what you need to do, just sit up, but-[971.12][971.12](LAUGHING) Mr. Flores, yours?
I have a slide presentation. It's an update, Mr. Taylor, I think.
Need a floor computer?
So, Tom, you're going to, you're going to be my remote control? Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me. I'll try to run through this quickly and get to a couple of key points I'd like to pass along. Tom, if you'd go to the next slide. This is actually in the annual report. I left one at each, each person's desk. You've seen this sort of a format before on metrics. We did have one announcement this year. That one announcement was the announced expansion at IDX. We assisted the county and IDX in negotiating the COF for expanding that facility. That's what's reflected there. And then you can move across and see everything else. We continue to work on our pipeline. I will tell you, it is, it's, we are having a very busy fiscal year this year. And we've already had two announcements. And Mr. McLaughlin, I apologize, neither of those were in Spotsylvania before you asked me where they were. One was in the city of Fredericksburg, and one is in Stafford. And we do continue to grow our private sector investors that help us keep in balance the 50-50 ratio between public and private investment in our organization. Tom, this just sort of gives you a flavor, the projects that are in the pipeline, and this has changed moderately, but we continue to see quite a bit of interest in manufacturing in the region. Office, the two announcements we've had this year were actually office, and one was pure office, and one was office and flex space. We are continuing to work with food processors. We do have actually about three or four lab data center projects that we're working on, and we do have a couple of distribution logistics that we continue to work. Tom, marketing calendar, this is pretty straightforward, this is what we're doing this year. I want to highlight in there, you see a UK call trip with Arlington. In front of you is this flyer, which explains why we did a joint marketing trip to the UK with Arlington. We focused on companies who have manufacturing and distribution operations in Europe who do not have a US headquarters. And we use this as the example. Between breakfast meetings in five cities in five days and one-on-one meetings, we made about 50 contacts. We've got 13 or 14 projects that we continue to work. Actually, while you all were having your public comment period, I was responding to an inquiry of a project that would be similar in scale to Lidl, who would need a corporate office in the US and about a 751 million square foot distribution center, a retailer that does not have any operations in the United States today. So that's why we went with Arlington. We rarely ever compete with them. In addition, what came out of that, you'll see a space holder over, way over to the right, that says ROI, that is our lead generation firm. About nine of the prospects that we had in the UK need third-party logistics help. That's basically where they don't need an entire warehouse, they don't need an entire facility, but they need 5,000 to 10,000 square feet to ship into, and then somebody to handle their distribution for them while they grow in the United States. Currently, there is no 3PL provider in the region, and so we've been focusing ROI on trying to help us recruit a third-party logistics firm to open a facility here. The other prospects that came out of that were a variety of manufacturers, as well as I mentioned, the earlier distribution. Any questions on the marketing calendar? Thank you. I may have shown this slide before, and I apologize if I did. Let me run through this quickly. What this is, is a Brookings Institute study on economic development organizations and how we spend our time. The slide on the left, they ask people to look backwards over the prior 10 years, and how did we spend our time? And organizations spent 80 to 90% of their time just on business attraction, just on trying to market to bring companies into region, into any region. And then the balance of the time was spent on, quote, "other." They got this survey from about 400 economic development organizations of all sizes, public, private, or nonprofit, equally funded, like our organization, regional, local, and state. On the right, we brought back their study questions and answered them internally. So we spend about 60% of our time on actual business attraction, but we spend a lot more time, and it's growing, in other things like other types of business development, B-to-B introductions, site development, working with, with our local partners, a variety of sort of other consultative work that we do, helping set up the Center for Business Research at the University of Mary Washington, which did the commuter skills study. We're actually working with GWRC to get a grant to update that study, because it's now about three years old. Capacity building, we've spoken about this before, but we continue to pursue the business-ready site program through VDP. We're also looking at what opportunities may exist with GoVirginia. One thing I did want to point out on regional site inventory, there are 23 certified business-ready sites in the entire state. We don't have any that, that would be Level 4 or 5 under the state system. Skipping over to the other side, we do continue to work on additional data center site identification across the region, because with our demand, with the prospects that we're working on, if they land, they're going to scoop up some of our best sites, and we need to backfill what our site inventory looks like. I do believe on data centers, the question isn't, isn't whether they're going to come to our region, I think the question is when. They simply are running out of land. The last land transaction for a data center in Northern Virginia was $1.5 million an acre. So at some point, your latency on fiber gets offset by your cost of development. Tom, Mr. McLaughlin has seen this before. I was asked by he and FAMPO and GWRC to talk a little bit about the out commute, and how do we continue to try to chip away at the 60,000 out commuters? The issue is really, business attraction alone is not going to create 60,000 jobs over a reasonable period of time, unless, of course, we land at three Amazons, which you see how rare those are. We just don't grow jobs fast enough in the region. We need more engines than just business attraction. And so there's been discussions at FAMPO and GWRC about a regional economic development strategic plan. We have a strategic plan, but our strategic plan is marketing. Tom, if you'd go to the next slide. These are the components of what would need to go into a regional economic development strategic plan. And it would have to be done, obviously, with local partners. It would not supersede the goals of any locality, but what we try to do is pull all that together, as well as other job creation engines, like technology acceleration for technology in Dahlgren. And how do we get that out into commercialization faster? How do we stand up stronger small business programs? How do we attract and grow a better entrepreneurship climate in the region? All of those things would have to play into this. And a lot of this, other than the column that says business attraction, is really beyond our scope without significant help from other partners, including the local governments. Tom? Our next event, we just, that shouldn't have been in here, we sent a different slide over here. We just had our annual meeting. Mr. McLaughlin was spellbound by the presentation, I might add. Our next event is actually on January 18th at 8:00 in the morning. We will be sending out a save the date. Stephen Farnsworth, political scientist at the University of Mary Washington, will give us a recap on the midterm elections. He'll talk about what he sees coming up, both in Congress and the General Assembly session, and then he'll talk about what he sees for the elections next year. Stephen is a very good speaker, very insightful, and very balanced, I think, in his approach. Tom? And this is our list of investors. There is one other thing that's on your desk. We wanted to leave behind that, you know, would attract attention in the UK, so we pulled up John Smith's 1608 map of the Chesapeake Bay region. And in 1608, he actually sailed up the Rappahannock River to the falls, before there was a Fredericksburg or a Spotsylvania or a Stafford. And he traded with the tribes that lived along the Rappahannock River. That is documented in his diary. So we like to say we've been hosting commerce since 1608. That got quite a good response while we were in the UK. Ironically, Arlington, we did not coordinate what our leave behinds were. They actually gave wine bottle corks stoppers, that they have a local craftsman who carves the handles out of driftwood on the Potomac River, which is also exhibited here on the map. So it was a nice one, too. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Skinner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Roberts, how big of a staff? I saw that there's four members on this region, this card you gave us out. How many actual staff do you have?
Four.
That's it?
Yes.
Four of you do all this?
Yes, sir.
Well, again, I just want to say thank you for what you've done. You've made a big change since you've come on board. You've certainly helped us a lot. And I don't want to leave Tom Remora out either, because Tom's very well established here, and he's done a lot for us, and working with you, too. So both of you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. It is a team sport. Nobody does one of these, nobody does an economic development transaction. Everybody, there are a lot of players in this, and we just try to be good partners with our local governments, and I think we have an excellent working relationship with your staff and with Tom and his team.
Mr. Chair?
Good.
So a quick one, you know, I've heard of a lot of this before, but, you know, from your position, talking to the board, do you have any recommendations on where we should go, or some areas that we, as the board, should look at, from Spotsylvania to El Paco?
In an open session?
Well, if you're not comfortable.
No, no, no. It's fine. It's product. You know, we, we just, what building inventory we have in the region is aged and dated. We don't have shovel-ready sites. There is no mega site in the region. I think there is an opportunity there for one. I think the state's quite interested, because the only four mega sites in Virginia that are over 750 acres are all in South Side and Southwest Virginia. None in Hampton Roads, none on the 95 corridor.
And I think that's kind of where-
We could really differentiate ourselves if we had a mega site right on the 95 corridor, just close to DC.
And that's kind of where I was hoping you were going to go with that, and I think as the board. I mean, that's one of the problems that I've seen, and I've gone to the meetings and that, is that there just aren't any pad-ready sites. We've ran out of buildings, we've done well, you filled them, you and Tom. Now we need some more pad sites and buildings to fill them up again, so.
Well, you have a pad site. It would accommodate, and I'm not saying everything has to be publicly held, but it's about a 78,000 square feet, square foot pad site, and at the moment, it would take an unusual user, because they're making about as much on the pad as they would if they put a building up for someone. There is about a 25-acre site in Stafford that you could call pad-ready.
We're not concerned about that one.
Pardon?
We're not concerned about that one.
Okay.[1792.62][1792.62](LAUGHING)
Spotsylvania topics only here.
I apologize for not- I apologize for not saying Spotsylvania region hosting commerce since 1608, but I hope that, I'd be happy to expand, but I hope that's what you were looking for. Yes, sir.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Thank you, and thank you for another coaster. I need about six more. You already gave me one, so...
Mr. Skinner, he ran off with the one I was going to give you at the PiaVine ribbon cutting, because he liked it so much.
Right, so, well, Mr. Skinner got to speak, and so that was my consolation prize.
And it's your district, right?
Yes. Topic that obviously is on everybody's mind, and you had mentioned it, was Amazon moving to Crystal City and splitting their 50,000 between there and Long Island. What do you see as coming down the pike to us besides residents that are going to, more than, a lot will live down here and commute up north, but in an economic development sense? And it's always been, and Mr. McLaughlin held on, too, is getting ourselves prepared for the next one that comes along, and we've talked before, shell buildings were a big thing years ago. Now pad-ready sites, it's always trying to get ahead of where you think the next guy's going to come, but, you know, for example, Lidl came, and nobody was ready for that, but we were able to accommodate that, too. So it's not to say that a pad-ready site is the only thing that we need, but it is just another thing that we will need. So with the Amazon question, but then also, if there's a way, and if anybody else is doing it, and if not, I think that our county really should look at working with local landowners in some sort of financial arrangement, that the county could extend infrastructure and do the work necessary to have a site-ready pad, because that is, it's upfront cost, and a lot of people just don't have that to do. But if we can work hand and glove with them, then I think that that is the type of partnership that it's going to take to get some of these places ready, and especially as we start running out of available land on the 95 corridor and available, you know, from the view shed, that we would not allow those places to just turn into lots of residential and understand that we still have the valuable commercial office manufacturing space that is valuable there, but might be raw land that the county needs to partner with somebody to get it up to speed so that we can attract somebody, because our industrial buildings are full, which is a good thing. But now, you know, we don't want to miss out on the other companies, because we don't have anything for them. So it's a two-part question.
I've got one, two, three, four. Let me start with Amazon, and I don't mean this as a debate. I'm a little bit of a contrarian on how that's going to impact us. Most of the end movement of the population here were people who had jobs in Northern Virginia and then moved here. If it wasn't that we had a mass population show up, and then they all went looking for jobs in Northern Virginia. That doesn't change what we need to do, it's just, I, Amazon is very purposeful about this, and we actually started about a month ago, working with the University of Mary Washington and with Jermana, and this was at the request of Dr. Pano. As part of the incentive package to Amazon, they are very focused. If you go back and look at the RFI from them, they are hypersensitive about workforce, which is why you see so much of that package is put into education and into training, not really direct payments to Amazon, which would be a general benefit to training across the state, and there are probably going to be some grants to universities and community colleges, who are helping almost backfill the pipeline of what it's going to take to fill the jobs at Amazon. If you go on the Amazon job board, which we did, because we were trying to figure out what skills are we going to need to train to, the only thing we can do is go to the job board in Seattle and look at it, probably 35%, 40% of their jobs are recruiters. They, because they're having to fill the jobs at all the distribution centers and the data centers that they've got around the country. And there's a very specific skill set for that, there's almost an age demographic of who they're looking for. I think, you know, a lot of their hires, and I think they were very purposeful about where, why they located where they did on a metro line. I think the likelihood for us is, yes, we may have some people who go to work there, but they're probably not going to drive any further than Springfield. You know, they're not going to, even if they do that, even if we get that. What I think the impact for us is going to be, is the jobs they pull, or employees they pull out of Fairfax and out of Prince William into Arlington, who are close enough to take the metro, those jobs are going to have to be backfilled. So it's going to, it's really not the direct Amazon jobs, it's the indirect impact of what they're going to do generally. And they're not, you know, they're not dropping it down all at once, but it is kind of daunting when you start thinking to yourself, you know, this is Fab Geico's, is what they're doing. There's no question about it. I view it as an opportunity, though, especially for our educational institutions, to turn out more of the workforce, so we can start telling people, you don't need to be north of Quantico, we're turning it out right here. And the generations who are younger than those of us are baby boomers. That earlier chart I showed you about the job growth, population growth, the staff intern I had that worked on that presented it, she also had a chart about who makes up the workforce in 2026, and only 15% of them are baby boomers. And she took the chart out to 2036, and it's zero baby boomers in the workforce, and she said, "Look at this, by 2036, you people are gone." I don't know that she meant to say it that way, kind of, you know, mortality moment, listening to her, but their whole view of work and life balance and transportation and place is very different than baby boomers, very, very different. And I just, I have a hard time envisioning them, you know, hiring 5,000 people who all want to drive an hour each way. I just, I just have a hard time with that. But the demand for the workforce is going to be there, because it's going to continue to push south. To your second question, what else are we looking at, and where are the opportunities? The opportunities are almost like they are with defense contractors. Who's got to be near them? Who's got to be near the base, but don't need to be right on top of them? So, you know, yes, we are, as is the Richmond region, because I read about it in the paper yesterday, they're doing what we did. They're researching what suppliers have offices and facilities in the Seattle area today, what companies, and can we get in front of them? The good news for us, especially, and I don't mind competing with Richmond for that, we do need help with facilities, because they've got some stuff we don't have, sites and buildings, but we're cheaper than they are on a cost of doing business based on per capita taxes. And, you know, we can, we're well within a 50-mile catchment radius for the workers that would be required for them, yet we're 50 miles closer to the mothership, so we're not the only ones looking at that. You know, I'm sure Winchester is, I'm sure Culpeper is, but I think that's where our opportunities are. Who are those suppliers? Who are those service providers to Amazon that we can get in front of?
If I can, just real quick, before you go on to questions three, four, five, and six that I asked, is also with those educational opportunities and that workforce as being educated, that are not going to work at Amazon, but are going to be educated in that, you know, that area, that, I think, is an opportunity for them to either start businesses or, you know, look for other businesses that might not, because Amazon is not going to be the be-all, end-all forever. You know, the companies come and go, GE is a great example from many years ago, and if anybody owns stock in there...
Sears.
Yeah, Sears, World War's, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them. So, but it is changing the way business is done, it's not necessarily the company, it's the way it's being done. With Richmond, though, you know, there's so many millennials that are down there, and it's becoming the hip, cool place to be, and so we need to make sure that we are positioning ourselves, and then letting the market, obviously, take it, but positioning ourselves so that we're not building a shell building, like we were supposed to do 20 years ago, and thinking that's what we need to do today. You know, we need to keep up with what is the trend, but, and that's why I think a lot of the work that you guys have done sets us up for that, because we are not thinking of ourselves anymore as the place that you can, you know, live in and drive to a job. Those jobs need to move down here, and we've talked a lot about it, but now we're actually doing a lot of that, too.
Well, that's question seven and eight.
Nine.
And nine, yeah, okay. You know, partnering with local landowners, there are numerous ways you could do that, and you're actually working on one. Ms. Parrish brought you guys a proposal on deferring rollback on land use on ag property that you rezone for industrial, and, you know, the tax in the rollback doesn't kick in until you change the use. That is from Hanover County. I'm a little upset with myself, because I actually gave Linwood Thomas that idea when he was in King George, and he proceeded to just take it to Hanover. He never got it done in King George, but he went to Hanover and did it. He also did another one that I think you all should consider. It's a deferred tax on someone who puts in a speculative shell building program. So what Hanover has agreed to do is rebate the incremental tax of the value of that improvement for up to six years or until they get a user, as a way to incent. There are all kinds of ways short, we need shell buildings, but there's all kinds of ways short of just throwing one up that you could do. You could also, even on your, to try to get to business-ready sites, is go ahead and improve a vanilla building plan, that then all you have to do is amend the plan, which takes a lot less time than the initial approval process. Doesn't take you out of the process, but it's a lot easier to amend the building plan than it is to start from scratch. It would save some time doing that. So as you're looking at pad sites, as you're looking at partnerships with landowners, that is something else you could do, on the site plan development.
Okay, thank you. You don't have to answer the rest. It was more of a discussion, and really to pick your brain, to, and also talk with the rest of the board, to see where we need to go, because we need to stay on top of, we can't just, you know, congratulate ourselves on what we've done, because they're already filled, the buildings are here, the jobs are done, the GM plant, who thought that that would have actually ever gotten done? But it did, and now we need to move on to the next one.
Right.
So, but I...
And I think you have opportunities, and you all and your EDA are excellent at focusing in on economic development. I commend you for it. You're great to work with.
And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You have any questions, comments for the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next, your informational matters, Mr. Chairman. Recalling the legal services contract we'll be taking up following closed session. Wanted to provide a few capital project updates with your approval of the animal shelter contract on tonight's consent agenda. Staff will be coordinating with the awarded contractor to identify a potential groundbreaking event date early in 2019, and we will get that project rolling. Company Six renovation and expansion, as the board has directed, the project design will be issued under an individual RFP, and that RFP is currently under development in the procurement office. We expect that will be out in, later this year, and with a design contract awarded in second quarter of calendar year 19. Company Three and Company Twelve, fire companies, staff is working to develop an RFP for building design services for those stations, and property acquisition efforts for Company Three are continuing. The Lickrun Museum space work is going on, with the anticipated move of the museum annex occurring in February of next year, and the museum that is currently housed at Merchant Square will be moved to the former Lickrun Community Center in March or April of 19. The Judicial Center expansion, the construction documents for that project have been finalized, and invitation for bid for the project is anticipated to be issued in December. Contract award is planned for sometime in the first quarter of next year. And the former sheriff's office demolition is ready to proceed. This project is moving forward as the board approved in 2017. The project consists of approximately $750,000 in demolition costs and about $300,000 for stabilization of the historic courthouse. Recall that the alternative was to renovate the 10,000-square-foot space, and the estimated cost for that was between $2 and $3 million, depending on the ultimate use. There's a significant savings in the course that we're taking. The area vacated by demolition of the building will remain dedicated green space in the courthouse area, and will restore the historic view shed of the courthouse and the jail. I've reviewed, at the board's request, the Morris and Whitmer DSS case in response to the comments that were made by Ms. Morris and Mr. Whitmer at your October 23rd board meeting. As you know, under state law, the record of the matter is confidential, and particulars cannot be discussed publicly in detail. Suffice to say, there is much more to the case than has been shared in the comments made in this chamber and in related emails that have been received, and I've found no basis for any modification of the course taken by Spotsylvania DSS at this time. As was noted earlier this evening, the matters go before the court again next Monday, November 19th, and indeed, these are matters for the judges, and they are pending in our courts. And that's all I can say to address that matter at this time.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us either to closed sessions, or closed session, for which we have several items, or to public hearings, of which we have two. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
My preference would be for the public hearings first. I have some constituents that I know are out in the audience, so I'd prefer that we address those first.
Is the board okay with that? Okay, let's do the presentations.
Very good. The first is CA 18-0004, Erosion and Settlement Control Ordinance and Fee Amendments. Mr. Tigner?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, Chairman Benton, members of the board.
Mr. Taylor, excuse me, do we not have public presentations first, before public hearings?
I apologize, Mr. Yakubowski, you're exactly correct.
Good catch, thank you.
Has anyone signed up for public presentations at this time?
No, sir.
Hallelujah.
Did anybody, does anybody wish to speak, did not speak up for public presentations at the 6:30? All right, close, there is a sign-up sheet there for... Ma'am?
There are separate sign-up sheets for the public hearings that are advertised for this evening, and for public comment. The two public hearings, one regards Erosion and Settlement Control Ordinance amendments and fee changes, and the other is the beef farms development in the Cortlandt District proposed by Gene Maston Kelly and Joyce A. Taylor. That is a separate public hearing, and that will be called in a few minutes.
All right. This is just for general public presentation that I'm calling now, where you can speak about everything or anything except the public hearings. All right, seeing none, close the public presentations. Now, Mr. Tigner, floors your, sorry.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm presenting KCA 18-0004. It is a request to amend both the Erosion Sedimentation Ordinance of the county, which is Chapter Eight of the county code, and also to amend our consolidated fee schedule to add four lines of fee code into that fee schedule. The case has previously been heard by the Planning Commission on October 17th, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously 6-0 to approve the recommended language of the Erosion Code Amendment and the adoption of the four fees for exceptionally large land disturbance projects. The new fees, as proposed, would start to kick in when a project would come before us with 400 acres of land disturbance area. That's removal of the topsoil and turf for the creation of a development, and it would escalate up to over 3,000 acres. Currently, this is a fee that the staff has recommended, because our normal fee structure just didn't consider projects of the scope of land disturbance over 400 to 3,000 acres or greater. Usually, a... Usually, a commercial or industrial site is one to five acres. A shopping center might be 25 to 50 acres, take a Cosnes Corner Shopping Center. A large project might be the Dominion Raceway, 110 acres, and a really large project might be a section of a subdivision that's graded, say, in Lee's Park that might be up to 250 to 300 acres. So to have a project over 400 acres is a large project, and the amount of time that it takes to inspect that project by third-party inspectors was never contemplated. So this fee structure contemplates that and would provide a process where those projects of that magnitude would be self-sufficient from fees. So if the board has any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. And also, Richard Street is here with me tonight also. Thank you.
Any questions concerning the board? Would you not have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
All right, we're open to public present, public hearing for CA 18-0004. Does anybody not, who did not sign up, wish to speak at this time? This is for CA 18-0004, Erosion and Settlement Control. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. McClellan.
I just had a quick question. What is the magnitude of the costs difference between a 400-acre project or a 1,000-acre? How much additional cost is it to the developer?
The additional, the additional cost over a year is, at 400 acres is $7,000 a month, and the largest contemplated one over 3,000 is $44,000 a month. $44,000 a month times the average duration of a project would bring in about additional $800,000 in revenue. And I can, I can tell you the frequency of inspections is mandated by the state law erosion control. We have to be out there every two weeks mandatory, or after every significant rainfall event, which apparently is every Friday. So I don't know if I'm gonna work every weekend, but certainly every week, we will have to go to these big projects and check every sediment basin to make sure it's not full of silt, to make sure they scoop it out, and keep them maintained because it just won't stop raining, and we have to go every time it rains. And a rainfall event is really not as much rain as we've been receiving. Technically, it's a half-inch rain in a 24-hour period. So after that, under Virginia law, we have to go inspect within 48 hours.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Marshall for the CA 18-0004, Erosion and Settlement Control Ordinance and Fee Amendment. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McClellan.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trammy.
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us now to R 18-0007, Gene Mastin Kelly and Joyce A. Taylor, Beef Farms Development LLC. This is Regency Crossing Townhouses in the Cortland District.
All right, floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to rezone approximately 2.69 acres from residential one to residential eight with proffers to allow for a maximum of 21 single-family attached units known as Regency Crossing Townhomes. Property is located on the east side of Five Mile Road, extended approximately 500 feet north of Plank Road. Under the current zoning of R1, the buyright potential is one single-family detached lot. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 3 and voted five to one to recommend approval with the proffer statement, and staff also is recommending approval and that the board adopt the ordinance RO 18-0007 to approve the rezoning. Here's a zoning map with the triangular-shaped parcel hatched in red. You'll see the property is adjacent to commercial-zoned properties to the south, including a self-storage facility and what is currently a vacant Rite Aid store. Across Five Mile Road Extended is vacant residential one property, and immediately to the north is a R8 and commercially-zoned development known as Regency Park, which included a high-density residential component known as Regency Villas and an office park component further north, which is not completely built out to date. Further north, shaded in purple, is the Barley Woods Age-Restricted Development, which is zoned planned development housing District 8-4. Here's the future land use map, and you can see that the designations predominantly reflect the existing development patterns and the commercial corridor along Plank Road. Regency Park Villas is here, shown in the bright yellow. This is a higher density of four units per acre. The Regency Park Villas density is five units per acre. The lines of these designation, designations are not hard and fast, but they're intended to be a guide. Given the development patterns, the zoning, and the location, the comprehensive plan would be supportive of either a commercial development in this location or the high-density residential. Here's an aerial map. Again, the property's 2.69 acres. You can see the vacant Rite Aid store here, the self-storage facility, and these are the Regency Park Villas. The property is currently vacant and heavily vegetated, as well as the property across Five Mile Road Extended. Here's the applicant's generalized development plan. You will first see the proposed development will have one point of access from Five Mile Road Extended. Then there will be private roads extending internally into the site. The proposed 21 home, townhome units are within three buildings, which will be three stories in height, except for the bank of buildings shaded in blue here. These will be two stories. This is one of the applicant's efforts made to be consistent in scale with the adjacent Regency Park Villas, as they are one and a half stories. The rest of the banks, this bank and this bank, will be three stories in height. All units will have a garage and individual driveways, and there's overflow parking spaces located throughout the site. Approximately 1.4 acres of open space will be provided, which is more than double what is required by code. I've shaded in the dark green area the preserved space that, to the rear, which will be undisturbed during construction. A tot lot that I've highlighted here will be provided, and shaded in lighter green is a 10-foot buffer, which will be provided along the property line between the proposed development and the Regency Park Villas. The buffer will consist of existing vegetation and be supplemented with one evergreen planting every five feet. Additionally, a six-foot solid brown fence, vinyl fence, will be installed along the property line adjacent to Regency Park Villas, which is highlighted in red. The bank of buildings shaded in blue will also have six-foot privacy fences for each individual rear yard. The landscaping and fencing provided, again, are efforts made by the applicant to address those concerns heard at the community meeting and subsequent meetings with the homeowners' association. The applicant is also proffering architectural features, which will mitigate the visual impact of the units shaded here in orange. There will be the same architectural features that are provided on the front facade will be provided on the side and rear, since you get a pretty good view of the rear end of those units as you're traveling down Five Mile Road Extended. Street trees are also provided along the frontage, and additional evergreen plantings here complete a solid screen of vegetation between the proposed use and the adjacent commercial development to the south. The development will have the one point of access on Five Mile Road Extended, which currently carries 1,233 trips and operates at a level of service B. The proposal is expected to generate approximately 122 additional trips daily with 11 of those in the peak hour. This is not a significant impact to the traffic and the level of service here. Taking into account the background traffic of Barley Woods Development that's just to the north and the unbuilt 84,000 square feet of approved office space for the Regency Park Development, with those two projects at full buildout, the level of service would degrade from a level of service B to a C, but a C is still consistent with the comprehensive plan policy that, that roads within the primary development be a minimum on the level of service D. A comprehensive plan analysis was completed, and the project is consistent on all fronts except for public facilities, specifically fire, rescue, and emergency services, and parks and recreation, where there is a capacity need, and there would be impacts from this development. The applicant is mitigating those impacts with cash contributions that have been proffered, and those are consistent with the proffer law. Regency Crossing will be a market rate project identified by the applicant's narrative with an average unit sales price of $300,000. The applicant's fiscal impact analysis asserts that the project will generate over $25,000 annually at full buildout. Staff completed a separate analysis utilizing the county's model and assumed an assessed value of $244,520, which is an average of newer comparable townhouse developments. The county's model projects a negative impact of $33,836. It's important to note that solely residential projects that may be considered affordable do result in projected negative fiscal impacts considering the projected tax generation versus the service demands. The applicant has provided a proffer statement for the board's consideration, including one, that the property will be developed in conformance with the generalized development plan just presented, that the development will be limited to 21 single-family attached units with no secondary uses permitted under R8 to be allowed. A homeowners' association will be established, and a declaration of conditions and covenants will be recorded. The HOA will be responsible for all the common area, the fencing, landscaping, and amenities. Further, the covenants will limit the number of size and, the number of size of dogs and the number of dogs permitted, and will prohibit dogs from being left outside while the unit is unoccupied. This specific language related to the dogs is the applicant's attempt to address the concerns that were raised at the community meeting, that dogs would be left outside and bark when the owners are at work or at school. The applicant is reserving 1.4 acres of open space. Again, that's more than double the required amount. A tot lot will be provided, as shown on the GDP, and a total cash contribution of $3,238 is provided to mitigate the project's impact on public safety and parks and recreation. Again, that proffer amount is consistent with proffer law. Architectural features from the front facade will be applied to the exterior side rear walls of the units visible from Five Mile Road Extended, specifically on units one through seven. Key findings identified by staff in favor that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the surrounding high-density residential development, and county-wide housing diversification goals. The proposal limits impacts to the surrounding area with appropriately scaled buildings, landscaping, architectural features, and fencing, while providing more than double the required open space. And the applicant has proffered cash contributions in order to mitigate the identified impacts to capital facilities. Findings against are that the project, based on the county's model, is projected to have negative fiscal impacts. Again, staff is recommending approval, as is the Planning Commission. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Any questions for the board? Applicant, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board of supervisors. My name is Charlie Pampelaw from Herschler. We're no longer Herschler-Fleischer. So that's my, my one marketing plug this morning, this evening. I have a, thanks to staff for his presentation. I have a brief slide presentation as well, and I'll, I'll go through that and then answer any questions you may have. As staff had noted, this does include one parcel. It's about 2.69 acres. It's located along Five Mile Road Extended near the intersection of Plank Road, which I'm sure you're familiar with. It's currently zoned R1. The proposal is to rezone into R8 for 21 single-family attached units. R8 is to provide for single-family attached residential dwellings only at a density not to exceed eight units to the acre. There have been some concerns by the residents that R8 somehow would allow apartments. It does not allow apartments. The property is, property is currently undeveloped, and as staff noted, there's only a 25% minimum open space requirement. We're actually far exceeding that by providing 52% open space. And again, in reaction to the community concerns when we had our community meetings and thereafter, the applicant met with many of the members of the adjoining neighborhood. Again, surrounding area, we believe this proposed use is compatible. In fact, it will be a good buffer from the Route 3 corridor commercial components to the residential components to our north, specifically the Regency Park Villas, which are market rate as well. They're not age-restricted. I didn't know, just want to make sure that you were aware of that. And there's 86 of those units that would be just to our immediate north. West of us, again, across the Five Mile Road Extended is vacant property, and south and east is commercial, as I noted. Here's the current zoning. You'll see the triangular piece that's wedged there between the properties to the, the residential property to the north and the commercial properties to the south and east. Open space and buffering, as noted earlier, will be used for natural areas, buffering from our neighbors and stormwater management. The impacts on existing residents in the vicinity of the property will mitigate it through limiting the heights of the townhouses that are adjacent to the development to the north, the residential development. So what we did was we took what your typical townhouse product would be from three stories to two. Quite honestly, that will have an impact on, on profitability and cost, but it's something we wanted to accommodate our neighbors. The applicant also will maintain certain portions of the, of the natural vegetation to our north. Right now, as you saw in the overview, there is a tree line there that will, will stay in place at least 10 feet, plus we'll have landscaping, and we'll push, obviously, the townhouses to the further south. There'll also be a six-foot privacy fence, and I'll show you the GDP where we're preserving some areas. No cultural resource or environmental impacts on the site, and it's, and it's not within a historical district. Comprehensive plan, as staff had noted, we believe this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Due to the property location, the mix of surrounding land uses, we believe this proposal acts as a proper transitional development. The proposed project also furthers multiple objectives of the comp plan, and not only creating jobs, obviously, during construction, but also providing a diverse housing inventory. We hear quite a bit that there's not adequate first-time homebuyer affordable homes in the area. This is an affordable product we think a first-time homebuyer would be attracted to. The property is located within the primary development boundary, so it does have access to public utilities. In fact, we'll be improving utilities in that area specifically for property, benefit properties into our north as well. And again, this is the highest and best use, in our opinion, for the site. Here's a site we copied Kimbley's overview. You'll see the triangular piece there in its current condition. You'll see the storage facility to our south, the vacant Rite Aid, and then the residential developments to our north. Here's our GDP. You see the access road of Five Mile Fort Road. You also see the proposed fencing that we're, six-foot fencing, we're gonna have privacy fencing along the boundary. We're also gonna have fencing in the backyards of all the townhomes that are, that are adjacent to the property to the north. You'll also see up in the, in the eastern corner, northeastern corner, that triangular piece there that will be preserved in its natural state and will not be developed. And you'll see the vegetation line that we're keeping in place there to the north. Next slide, please. Fiscal benefits stated in the staff report in our, in our application, the average home prices would be for $250,000 to $300,000. Of course, a two-story versus a three-story per unit. The project would generate approximately 36 new jobs during construction, resulting about $1.2 million in employee earnings and input into the county. The project will generate annually net revenue surplus onsite and off after full buildup of $25,374. So the county model just looks at assess real estate values. We take into account all the tax generation that will occur from the site, including personal property tax. And we also use market rate for our analysis versus assessments. Transportation, so this slide is specifically to show what the various uses that could be on that site and what their impacts would be. So if, if it was to be a daycare, let's say, in that location, you would have 741 trips per day, about 122 during the AM, 123 during the PM on that site. If it was retail, you see, again, 443 during the day, 68 AM and 27 PM trips. This is traffic trips in that corridor. If it- If it was medical, again, 361 daily, 24 AM and 36 PM. So our proposed use for 21 townhouses actually is a much less impact of what could be developed on that site. 122 total for the day, nine during AM and 11 during PM. And as staff noted, no degradation on the level of services at any of the key intersections. Schools, this is located in the Harrison Road Elementary, Chancery Middle and Riverbent High School districts. Based on the county's estimates, we will generate about 12 school-aged kids and there is existing capacity in all the schools, so there's no impacts there for purposes of addressing the proffers. Public safety, parks and rec, as staff have noted, we are impacting those and we are providing cash proffers to address those impacts. And here are the proffers that will be paying 154.19 per unit to address those impacts. The additional other proffers which are key here, again, shrinking the size of those units 13 through 21 that are closest to our neighbors, to two stories and including the six-foot privacy fence along the boundary line and also in the rear yards. And then also creating the 25-foot setback between those lots as well, which includes that 10-foot natural tree vegetation area that will not be disturbed and also that corner pieces I described will not be disturbed as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate your time.
Any questions on the board? What kind of turn lane is into the project off of Five Mile Road?
It's, it's a standard V-dot required entrance.
No taper, no regular?
Didn't, as the applicant stated, it didn't qualify for taper.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing for R180007, Jean Maston Kelly and Joyce A. Taylor, Bee Farms Development, Regency Crossing Townhomes. Do we have any?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anybody that did not sign up that would like to come and speak in this reference? Ma'am, I saw your hand first, you can go forward.
Thank you. I'm Andrea Stromer. I live at 6238 Autumn Leaf Drive in Regency Park Villas. Many people in our community are against the rezoning because they want nothing to be built on this property. But it stands to reason that if a residential project is not built on this land, it will eventually be rezoned commercial. I too was initially against this townhouse project. However, Mr. Garrison addressed just about every single concern that the residents brought up. It included lowering the height of a building, ensuring the trees that buffer, because we have less than a 20-foot buffer between our house and, and the property line, which was an error when our community was built. The trees that were there are, don't belong to us. They belong to the property next door and he ensured that those trees would remain and that he would add additional trees just to make sure that the buffer is there. Regency Crossing will be a very nice addition to our area along with the new community, Barley Woods, that is under construction on Five Mile Road Extension. We need your support for more residential commercials along Five Mile Road, not more commercial. We know that the, the area right across the street from us, which is a large chunk, will eventually be a big shopping center. Please vote to rezone this property to R8 and allow the Regency Crossing Townhouse to be built. Thank you very much.
All right, one of the gentlemen that raised the hands can come forward.
Chairman and board members, my name is Larry Lisette. I am in the Chancellor District and live in Regency Park. I was in attendance when the planning committee had their meeting and presentation. I don't agree with everything, but their, their numbers are based on statistics that are provided. This is going to have an impact on the county of a negative number as far as our taxes going up. And it's nice that they would want to put townhouses in there or any additional houses. But I think that impact is going to affect me and all the taxpayers in the county because it's going to cost us additional revenue that you're going to require in order to offset those expenses that he said that weren't covered. And the pro offers only cover the first year. They don't cover 10 years from now or five years from now, so that number is going to continue to grow. Where you would have a commercial property on that lot, it would generate money, it would generate jobs and less expense to the county. And I would like the board and the chairman to vote against this approval. Thank you.
My name is Gordon Grimsley, Mr. Chairman and board members. I live at Regency Park Villas. My main problem with this development is the, the narrowness of this lot. I have measured the area between the, I don't know if you have this drawing or something like this with you now, but we've got two buildings run parallel. One has nine units, one has seven. And from building to building across the street is 97 feet. And that's not very much. You've got a driveway and the main driveway going through the unit and then all the individual driveways. So the, it's like they've just had to squeeze these things together to get the 21 units on this piece of property. Now, when they, you've got about close to one acre of land that they can't build on because of the angles of this triangle. So, but they were able to figure those into the configuration to get the 21 units, which I'm not sure if that's right or not. Down the road, we have Barley Woods, which is a new development and it's attached and unattached houses. Their prices are going from a, a large one which is about 2,100 square feet, about $350,000. Down to one about 1,700 square feet, which is about $300,000. I live in the, the villas and my unit is just under 1,500 square feet and I paid $216,000 for it about a year and a half ago. So my, my point is why would, why would somebody buy one of these units for $300,000 when they could buy these other sized houses for the same thing or buy one like mine for less? And I don't think they're going to sell these things for $300,000. I don't think there's any way. Because I've been in construction for, for many years, been a home builder and I worked for companies building townhomes and I know how they build these things. And they have to build them cheap to get the, to get the profit up. And it'll be the same for this one here. There's no way they're going to get $300,000. I'll bet they'll, they'll be lucky if they get $229,000. So that's my whole point and I hope you vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that did not sign up to speak at this public hearing that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is the applicant going to speak again?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you just would indulge me to just respond to some of the comments that were made. I mean, first of all, I think it's important to note that anytime members of the public speak, it's much appreciated by us. I'm sure it's appreciated by you. We obviously had a community meeting and a lot of people from the Regency Villa Development that came to the community meeting. I would, I would admit that at that time, there were some questions, lots of questions as to what the impact of the project may be. My client immediately addressed those impacts, went to meet with individuals and we came up with a plan that we have, which I, I think in all fairness is truly a mitigation to buffer and address those concerns. So we appreciate those comments and in, in many ways, the comments that we heard from the community have helped shape this project. I believe Mr. Stromer actually said a lot of what I would say in response to a project like this, that one, its impact is from a purpose, for purposes of what could be developed on the site is the least impactful, is truly the highest and best use for this site and it will be a benefit in our, in our opinion to our neighbors. In regards to issues regarding cost and size of the, of the buildings and size of the units, et cetera, our units are planned to be larger than, than the units that are adjacent to us. The price points are based on products that we, similar product that we have sold in the county. My client has sold in the county at Lafayette Crossing by way of example. We think, quite honestly, this is a very attractive location as compared to Lafayette Crossing, so the price points may be a little bit higher. The only reduction impact is obviously because we're losing a story on about eight of those units. But at the end of the day, we think that it will be very positive for that purpose and will generate more than just real estate taxes. I'm sure we know and understand that from, especially from new homes and first-time homebuyers, it's just not real estate taxes are paid, it's personal property tax typically is a couple of vehicles. There's meals tax, sales tax. Most of the food and groceries and products that are acquired in a locality are acquired, about 72% acquired in Spotsylvania County. If you live in Spotsylvania County, you typically buy groceries and food in Spotsylvania County and other products. We also, in regards to the lot sizes, the lot sizes are consistent with any other development in Spotsylvania County or consistent with the ordinance. And let's not forget that we, we, we have buffered the development and we have not tried to increase the number of units. So what we've got is a product that addresses both the offset impacts and also reasonably mitigates those concerns. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, I appreciate your time this evening. I know you, you've had a fairly long night.
Mr. Skinner?
Charlie, one question. And you know, there's always a difference between what we lose tax-wise and everything. What are you adding to it because we have a difference on our, what we use and what you use and we always see this difference? What are you using to, how much we're going to get per year? You know, what other?
I'll let Kimberly answer.
Okay.
Her model. Our model is based on market price pricing, so not assessed values. Assessed values are for the counties, what they look at as comparable developments or comparable units and they come up with their analysis based on the assessed value. We look at the market value. We also take into account personal property tax and also you see in our analysis off-site benefits, which are the sales and the meals tax and the other that I just described. So that, that number should be accounted for because that's the generation that's actually coming from those units.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner, our model is based on the assessed value because that's how our taxes are, are, are generated from. It does take into account personal property tax, sales tax, meals tax. Staff's understanding of the difference is what our model doesn't account for are those spin-off revenues, the, you know, beyond the immediate sales and meals from those residents. It's, it's the beyond spin-off revenues.
The typical spending patterns of those individuals who live in those units.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ross?
So is the negative amount Kimberly from schoolchildren? Is that how we got? Because I thought there's a, the county's had a negative impact of like $34,000. Is that due to the school?
Not necessarily the school. It's based on the assessed value of those comparable developments like Lafayette Crossing. So the amount was 244,000. So in our model, that is not generating enough revenue based on the taxes, the revenue generated from that.
Enough revenue for like fire, safety schools?
Right. The break-even point is, is $370,000.
$370,000?
Approximately.
What is the revenue projected, the additional revenue projected by this development?
The county's model doesn't project any revenue. It's a negative amount of over $24,000, $33,000.
Are you looking for a total number?
Well, you're looking that up. I just want to thank the constituents for coming out and speaking. I want to thank the developer. I know that I couldn't make the community meeting because I think we either had a board meeting or a FAMPO meeting, but I did come over to the homeowners association at one point with the planning commissioner. And, and since that time, it does look like, and I think, I'm not sure if the developer came over and spoke to you guys as well after I did. But the things that I'm seeing that are different now are the six-foot fence and, and Charlie, if you can listen with me too, because I, I want to make sure I'm catching it. The two stories instead of the three stories, the privacy fences in the back of those units, the dog, what was the, what's the dog constraint?
We've included in our proffers a restrictive covenant that will be in our recorded covenants that dogs will be a certain weight and they cannot be left outside during the day.
Okay.
So I think 30 pounds was the max for the dogs.
Gotcha.
So you've got to, got to have lean dogs on the site.
And, and then the tot lots, I don't think that was in there, but it could have been. But I think one of the major concerns was even children coming over to the other development and I think that six-foot fence is going to take care of that. But are there anything, is there anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, we're preserving over 52% open space versus a 25 minimum.
And the, the other thing, and confirm this, I think I was talking with Kimberly today, the average square footage of these townhomes is going to be about 2,100 square feet?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Base.
So it's a pretty good size too. And then one thing that did surprise me, I do, Kimberly, you actually said at the beginning, this property is either going to become commercial or high-density residential. And I guess we, we heard from, was it your brief that, no, it was Mr. Payne's brief. Do you agree with the trips for like a daycare? Have you, have you looked at that on, on staff's side? That they are way higher than 122?
Yes.
And retail would be 443? That's all county numbers. Any, any other board member have any questions? Well, again, I want to thank the constituents for coming out. I did send several emails over to the homeowners association to ask if I should come back over again and I was told through that leadership that I shouldn't because the majority of the residents did support this and wanted it more than, than say a commercial thing. So I'm going to motion to approve special use permit. What's the number? You have a number?
Yeah, I got it. R180007, Jean Maston Kelly and Joyce A. Taylor, Bee Farms Development.
Just, just for the record, it's a rezoning, not a special use permit.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
For the rezoning, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ross to approve the rezoning of R18-0007, Jean Maston Kelly and Joyce A. Taylor, Bee Farms LLC, Regency Crossing Townhomes. Any other discussion? Mr. Akabowski?
Aye.
Mr. McCroft?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
As usual, chairs nay.
Mr. Chairman, that, that brings us to closed session. We do have several items. Carl, would you read the resolution, please?
This resolution is to adjourn into closed meeting. This has changed slightly from the one that is in your packet. Amy has one for public review. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the county, specifically the county administrator and employees of the Department of Social Services. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positioning or negotiating strategy of a public body, specifically discussion of real property in the Chancellor District and real property in the Cortlandt District. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically a technology business and governmental industry. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants proceeding to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding the matter of Clara Mills v. Spotsylvania County in the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia, Civil Action 3:18 CV 423-MHL. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically relating to a claim against the county. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for a discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open meeting session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically a contract for legal services. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A 13578 and 29, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Skinner, Mr. Akabowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLavish?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's eye.
Affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting where heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Akabowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLavish?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's eye.
Mr. Chair, you may recall that the board moved its consideration of the legal services contract to after closed meeting. And I would respectfully ask the board for a motion to continue consideration of that matter till the board's meeting in December.
Can we get a motion on that?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Akabowski. For what Carl said. Amy, did you get any of that? Mr. Akabowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLavish?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's eye.
Finally, the chair members of the board, one matter of new business here. I respectfully request that the board authorize Deputy County Administrator Mark Cole to appear on behalf of the board before the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia on December 3, 2018, or whenever the matter is here and after scheduled, to participate in the settlement conference scheduled and required by the court in the matter of Clara Mills versus Spotsylvania County. Then Mr. Cole shall be duly authorized to act on behalf of the board pursuant to the guidance and limitations discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Trampy to require Mr., what he said, Mr. Cole, you'll go to the federal court as needed for input into the Clara Mills case. Mr. Akabowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLavish?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's eye. Adjournment, all ayes?
Most adjourned.